For the sake of the audience, and I know the board has already been told, but for the sake of the audience, we are, this, this meeting is being recorded, so there is a camera in the back wall, if you're wondering where the, the video is, it's on the back wall there, capturing the entire room. And there is sound that we will use. Right now, there are two microphones, so we'll have, we're going to get more, but for now, the board will, if we have a presenter, there's a microphone for presenters, and then if we have questions, we'll kind of share this microphone for now, okay? And then we're, this is kind of our test run, we'll see how it goes, and we're going to look to add some more microphones and, okay.
This is our low-cost solution?
This is a very low-cost solution, yeah. This is existing equipment, and this system is the Epic system, so this is a system that's at Leonard and Bemis, that's being piloted, and then will be, that you've already authorized for the other elementary schools moving forward.
Okay, so with that, we are going to start our meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 4th, 2025 Board of Education Workshop. We have all of our trustees present. I do want to give a special welcome to our Career Accelerator Program students that are in the audi, the audience today. So these students have an interest in governance, and so will be joining us for the workshop. We had an opportunity as a board to have dinner with them before and answer some questions, but we're very, very excited about this new kind of track, because this, I think, is new, this governance track in the program. So we welcome you, and we are glad that you have, you have an entrance in govern, an interest in governance, and happy to help you, you know, as you go through your program. So with that, our first item of business is public communication, okay? We do not have any public communication tonight, so our next item of business is business services, and I will ask Mr. Trudell to go through a number of items for us tonight.
Thank you. So our first item on the business service agenda is relating to site work and signage upgrades at Smith Middle School. So this was the, the final, tentatively the final bid pack for the new Smith Middle School, and this one does relate to primarily the entrance off of Livernoy, so this is all the site work that would be part of that project to get rid of the two houses that we did purchase as a district to allow for an entrance to be added. So there's a significant amount of, of site work involved, which is the majority of this bid pack aside from the signage. So this'll deal with all of the drainage right off Livernoy, there is a drain there, so we do have to work with the State of Michigan, the Eagle is the department that we're dealing with in order to make sure we appropriately install a roadway over that drainage leading into the new complex there. So, let me open up my document here. So, we did receive multiple bids, again, this was the low bidder, so the total for the site work was just over $3.5 million. I did send, or Bart Mallow did send a kind of a detailed breakdown you have in front of you. So this is just to give you a, a rough idea of what those costs were, so you can see there's different components to the actual site work there, so I thought that might be a helpful breakdown for you. And then the signage as well, Bart Mallow and TMP were working with the city to make sure all of the signage on that site were up to code and city ordinance and all of that, so we did wait to bid that one out, and then that came in just over $100,000. So in total, with the eight percent, eight percent contingency, $3,988,216 is, is the request.
Just a question on the signage, is that temporary signage for the construction site, or is that the sign, that's not the signage for, you know, the actual building, is it?
Yeah, it's the actual signage.
Oh, it is the actual signage.
There will be some temporary roads as a part of this project, which would include some temporary signage, but this also does have all the right-of-way signage out, like along the street and everything too, so.
Oh, okay, so it's mostly traffic signage?
Yeah, right-of-way signage, yeah.
It's not like the sign for the hello, welcome to new Smith Middle School or anything like that?
No, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's all really, it's more to the roadway.
Okay, great. Other questions? Go ahead.
So, the city required us to have an additional lane to come in, does that include that in this one?
Yep.
Okay. And the signage, does not include the permanent Smith signage?
I was just reading the scope a little more, so this does include the interior building signage as well as the exterior building signage, plus the right-of-way signage in the parking lots and the entrance as well, so.
So it includes the final Smith Middle School sign?
Yep.
That's at the door, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, all right. And just remind me, this is only two houses, right? There's still going to be one house in the middle of our little circle, our runaround?
Yeah, the district only acquired two houses off of Livernoy.
Okay, so the third house is still going to be there?
Yep.
Kind of the current situation? Okay, all right, that's all the questions.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will be voting on that at our next meeting.
So the next item relates to interior painting services, so each year, we try to do painting, because painting is not a sinking fund eligible expenditure, it's not considered permanent in nature, so we do have to use general fund dollars. The only time you can use sinking fund or bond dollars to paint is as part of a larger project. So if I were to rip up flooring and I have to put new base molding on, I could then paint the walls to match, but again, the general painting of a school hallway or a classroom has to be general fund. So again, it's, it's generally a limited amount that we do out of the general fund each year, but you try to chip away at it a little by little each year. So this would just pertain to some hallways and corridors. This RFP does address Schroder, the gym and cafeteria at Waddles, and then that would also have some door frames, doors and railings at the Troy High Auditorium. So this was the low bidder, came in at just over $43,000, and then we do have a small contingency, we're asking for $50,000, that'll allow a little flexibility as they go into the buildings and kind of cater to what the staff are requesting if there's small modifications.
Questions?
As we're, as we're doing these things, none of this is going to be affected by the bond work, right? So whatever painting is done at Troy High is for an auditorium that's going to remain there?
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay, anything else? All right.
That's projecting.
This was just what was in the bid pack, or the board packet, I should say, but this was the official recommendation from our operations department. So any questions on that one?
Nope, go to the next.
And now, let's jump into the bus time study, so I'm going to have our transportation director Kathy join me, and then we'll kind of update you as to what the process has been thus far.
Hi Kathy.
So as we talked at the last workshop, we did engage with company called School Bus Logistics. We've met with them probably five or six times now, and we are working through right now different scenarios, and we wanted to come to the board today to get a little bit more direction as they're starting to put together some options for us. They're asking, do you want to look at options that have zero cost impact, or do you want to look at options that do have a cost impact? I know Kathy, and she can talk about this a little more, has run the scenarios a couple years ago, which did lead to some additional drivers that would be needed, as well as additional buses to accommodate this scenario. The one option that they are looking at currently that would be more cost neutral would be if you flipped your elementary to start first, and then your high school would start last. So we wanted to come to this table to have that conversation of, is that even a viable option to consider, or if not, then we can give them the direction to proceed with looking at options that would include additional costs without impacting the elementary level. And then likewise, they also do have an option where you could flip middle school to start first instead of high school, so you don't get as much of a, a later start with that option as you would with the elementaries, but again, another scenario to consider. So I'll let Kathy kind of talk about the, what was done previously.
Okay, so previously, we had done in 21, the study, and we had did a, like a three-tier, because they wanted the high schools to start later, and then we just did a three-tier, and it was a significant amount of cost to add buses and add drivers, and due to the driver's shortage, there was no way that we would be able to implement that, because First Student could not hire drivers across the nation, there was a shortage of drivers. To date now, it is getting better, we still are short drivers. First Student just negotiated with their union, the Teamsters, that the pay rate is going up to $25 to start per driver, so we're hoping with that start, the cost going up for driver shortage, that we'll get more drivers. It is improving, but we're not there yet. So with that in mind, if we do have to add buses, that means we have to add drivers, and that's where we come into the issue.
I was just going to ask one question. So when we looked at this a couple of years ago and ran into the driver's shortage, I recall we costed out what it would take to do the three-tier, kind of still leaving the cadence of, you know, when, well, I guess it didn't, it changed, it changed the cadence, but it left elementary and middle school, you know, relatively unchanged. What was, what was the cost for that?
I believe it was like close to $800,000.
Yeah, okay, because I remember about a million dollars is what we had.
Yeah, and that was having the high school start at eight, middle school eight-thirty, and elementary at nine.
Nine, yeah, okay.
And there were some conflicts that we had arose, that we had seen with those timing. One would be a later time for athletics, there was issues with that. I have a list here of things that I potentially had seen. We do do high school shuttles back and forth, you know, so would that be affected? Are we southern plan on doing, you know, utilizing that? So there are some questions that I would have with that aspect if we did that.
Okay.
From my perspective, when we actually did this last time, we were okay with going, with this additional cost, except that the bus driver shortage is what prevented us from going, so I assume, I still stay with the same notion that we are okay with going that much higher, as long as we have the bus drivers and we can get the schools start.
Yes, the cost has gone up, of course, the cost has gone up from, you know. First Student charges more per route now.
Okay.
The cost has significantly gone up, so that I would have to.
So what would be good for us to know is what would the cost be now?
Okay, I would have to go back and look at what the cost is now. We are in negotiations with First Student, we have two-year added on to our contract, so we have to negotiate pricing. So we have a meeting with them on March 11th, so we'd have a better idea of what they're looking for and what we're going to agree to, to, for the cost per route.
Okay, that would help.
Because from this area here, it is, yeah, for Gen N, it's close to 300, yeah.
You could bring it 10 to 15% higher.
Yeah.
So you're probably in the 560 to 570,000 dollar range annually.
Oh.
And then the bus purchase, obviously, you could utilize bond funds for that.
Yeah. And our new buses that were coming, could those be used, or is, should, do we need to purchase additional ones? The UVs?
Yeah, we have two electric buses that would be here probably in October, November timeframe, they're in production right now, so obviously, those could be used as part of this, but then looking at buying the, how many was this here? Seven additional buses.
Okay.
So, and those, right now, they were about 127,000 before, the going rate now is around 145,000 for a gas bus.
So really, the intent for Kathy and Dan bringing this information today is really just to let you know that the study is ongoing. What we would like to bring back to, to the individuals doing the study is, is there an interest in moving forward with a notion that we flip the elementary and the high school? Because if there, if there's not an interest, then they're not going to study that. So that leads me to my question, so I had asked previously, at some point, I don't know whether it was three or four years ago, there was a parent survey, I was not on the board yet, that was sent out and asked all of these questions of, are you okay with, you know, if we have to, if we're going to push high school start times, have middle school start earlier, have elementary school start earlier? Did we, were you able to find that information, the results of that study?
I have not been able to find it. You do have it, huh?
Okay, so I mean, so we reached out to the community, so I think it's fair to see what they, you know, were comfortable with.
And that was how long ago? In 21? Two years? Four now?
A whole generation of parents?
Yeah. And it was, it was the, the survey, yeah, it's no specific, the survey was pretty clear that the community wanted to maintain the current cadence of, or high school, middle and elementary. We did ask, was there an interest potentially in having elementary go first? If there was very little interest in that, it wasn't specifically, but.
Yeah, and it was at that point that, you know, if you recall, the board said, you know, given the data that we looked at in terms of the impact of lack of sleep on teenagers, that, you know, and that's why I was asking about the million-dollar figure, and we do need to have that updated, but at the time, the board was prepared, you know, to spend up to a million dollars on changing, you know, the routes so that we could have a later high school start time. Obviously, new board, so we need to have that discussion, but unless, I guess, to the specific question that was asked, does anybody feel that it would be worthwhile to study the flip of elementary with high school?
So elementary start at 7:20? That probably would be very difficult.
Yeah, I'm seeing, I mean, but, but, but that's the question we're being asked, and so I'm seeing head shakes, no.
I mean, I go back to, we did a parent survey for a reason, and so if, if the community does not want to deal with this issue by flipping the two, then I don't think that makes, I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense. I, I mean, I do have additional questions.
Yeah, but, but that's the question before us, and I don't see anybody supporting that, so to answer your question, no, you can take that, that off the table, yeah.
So we'll, we'll go back with them, we do have a meeting with them on Thursday of this week, so we will let them know that we do want to assess the options for an additional cost and additional routes, but looking perhaps, you know, we could send them this as well and just say, is, is this the most efficient way to do this, and if not, can you recommend, perhaps, we could get it down to five buses or, or something.
So the, the, so a couple of the additional questions or comments I had, I know at some point when somebody came back from NASB conference, some districts had taken, had reduced some of the impacts of this by using vans, for example, so maybe if it's a special education route, or you're not, you don't need to fill a bus with 60 or 70 students, I don't know how many students fit on a bus, you need to, you need room for 10 or 15, because one, it doesn't require a driver to have a CDL license, and it's a smaller vehicle to maintain, and so it, it takes care of several issues. So I would still put that forth as, you know, as, if we do decide to move, I don't know how many, if we do decide to, you know, move forward with any of this, I think it's a, you know, fair to have that as a, as a part of the conversation, or as we're replacing equipment. And then the other question or comment, when we talked about this maybe a year ago or my first year on the board, was maybe this idea of four start times, and so, and I don't know if that would be, you know, if that might be acceptable to the community. I think it's also fair to come, come back with two or three variations, and then go back to the community and ask them very pointedly, but the idea of four start times is, it might be possible to start the middle, half of the middle schools already start at 7:52. It might be possible to start them at 7:45, which is an extra five or six minutes, but then start the high schools at 8:30 when half of the middle schools are going. So it's not, you're not going back to a fully three-tier system, there might be a way to build a four-tier system. So I think that's fair to, and I don't know if you guys are looking at that, but I would look at that, and I would feel comfortable, and I wouldn't necessarily make a decision, but if we do come back with one or two scenarios that we're comfortable with, going back to the community saying, because a lot of people do ask all the time, when are we going to get those late start times? You guys promised that, you know, four years ago, to go back and say, at this point, we can deliver that, these are the two or three options. It's either this, or, you know, this is not something we can move forward with.
And the whole idea of reopening this is also to look at innovative options, so maybe go with, there was something that was discussed at one of the conferences, which is neighborhood nodes, as in like have a bus pick up only at a node in the neighborhood, and somehow make it the responsibility of the neighborhood to bring the kids to that node, and that, any kind of innovative ways, innovative options to reduce, help that.
The other thing that I would want to ask you is if we do a scenario, another scenario, you were saying that if the middle school started before the high school, keep that scenario, correct?
Yeah.
The other one would be, what if we did something where we picked up the high school and middle schoolers together? That is, that is something, another scenario that we could have them look at.
Absolutely.
I think you're fair to that. I know they do that for me.
Absolutely.
Just a question about, with the challenge of recruiting bus drivers, I would imagine there's also a challenge to retaining bus drivers. So my question is, would, could there be scenarios which would make our district less appealing to bus drivers in terms of routes, times, hours, downtime, things like that? Because I think that's something that we should consider when we're putting together those things.
I can definitely answer that. Right now, our, we have five tiers, we're one of the larger districts, and we're one of the only districts of sites, nobody, they have a five-tier system. Our drivers get six-plus hours a day, so if we went down to a three-tier system and they're only getting four hours, the retention would be lower. So just to let you know that, that is definitely a possibility.
Kathy, there are schools that actually use them during lunchtime at different schools, also make them full-time, is that something we do?
We have. The problem that we foresee with that is a lot of times, they, we have midday routes, like preschool routes and stuff like that, so they have the opportunity to do those routes. Being that it's a split shift, they like to have three hours in the morning to do their morning route, because we're a five-tier system, and three hours in the afternoon, so you're, that's six hours right there. They have that whole day in between to go home and do whatever, that's how we attract moms and people who are living in Troy. However, if you're breaking that up, two hours here, two hours there, it's a little bit harder for them to enjoy their full day.
We can bring back those as potential.
Cons.
Cons to, there's the pros and then there's the cons, I think that's, that's important.
I mean, a lot of them used to be noon aids, you know, so I know that that was helpful at some point in time, but you're taking an hour and a half, they get done at nine, they have to noon aid at 11, so their time's split up, so it's an hour and a half noon aid, and then getting back to the bus stop by 1:45, so that's your whole day. So it's not as attractive to them, than a three-hour shift in the morning, a three-hour shift in the afternoon.
I think we have the information we need to get, and we have this on the agenda for April.
Yep, so our, our plan would be then to go back to them on Thursday of this week, let them know that all along, we've said, we want to see at least two or three good options that we can then bring as part of a final report to the board in April. So given this information, we'll take it back to them, and then give them a little bit further direction as to what options we're considering, and then hopefully, we have a, a few good ones that we can then bring back for more discussion.
And we'll update.
Yes, yep. Yeah, we might update this and then send it to them, just so they know kind of where we were, and, you know, we'll compare that to their options as well, so.
Great, okay, thank you so much. Okay, furniture. Thanks Kathy.
So the next proposed item here is the furniture purchase. So as we did with the playgrounds at the elementary level, we did half furniture, half playgrounds amongst the elementaries last summer. This summer, it's the opposite, so the buildings that got furniture last year are getting playgrounds this summer, and then likewise, those that got playgrounds last summer will be getting furniture this year, so. This recommendation from TMP was included in the board packet online, so this would be for Barnard, Bemis, Hill, Martel, Morse, and Troy Union Elementaries, and then we do have some furniture that's been piloted at Troy High within the Social Studies and ELA Department, so that's all-inclusive here. We will provide at the actual board meeting for the formal approval, the final amounts, so right now, these numbers you see here are not to exceed, and that's the actual bond budgeted number within the bond application, so, and again, this is all consortium pricing, it's a very common way to purchase furniture in a school district, it gives you competitive pricing, but the flexibility to pick and choose colors and styles as the, as each building desires, so again, same, same type of logic in terms of the structure and the design as the elementary schools last year, it'll be carried over into this summer's work. And then the moving services that you approved at the last meeting is, is for this project, so.
Questions, comments?
You know, the only question I had, I, I thought it was interesting in the TMP memo that they talked about, this has been an ongoing process with teachers and principals, and kind of suggested that we've learned some things, and that it's impacted what we're doing with this set, and I was just curious, do you know what some of those learnings were?
Yeah, and I, I'll let Christine speak more to it, but I, typically, it's the, the model of something, something might break easier, or something may not function just exactly as you thought it would, I don't know if they're specific.
Yeah, we had a way to go back from our high school students, that some of them were different than our middle school students, so I think the kind of chairs were like, so the security, the chair felt like under a wobble, didn't fall, or whatever, much of the wobble a lot, our high school students, so.
They grew out of the wobble, huh?
So just I had a really good conversation with our teachers in our, at Troy High, the ELA, which is pretty, which are the ones from, personally, and with that, and, you know, they really wanted to make sure that they could have, you know, a setup where there was collaboration in the rooms, as well as if they had the time, they were really wanting to make sure that we're full, those opportunities there. So just along the way, they just learned different, how different disciplines in secondary tend to think a little bit differently than others, so there are ELAs kind of looking for, there's different, what our math teacher is looking for, and then I know we're going to, that way, just a minute, not quite a bit throughout this year, where I would actually post, just make some small things, over, wasn't, or our kids drawn to, you know, for college.
Okay, great, good. Anything else for Dan? All right, great, then these, three of these will be on the agenda for our approval at our next meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thanks Dan, appreciate it. All right, next item is an update on CTE and career readiness. Looks like Christine will go through that.
And then Mike.
Oh, Mike, yes.
Mike Monaca will be joining us?
Great.
Mike, like to be met every one of them? Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So it's been, it's been a little while since we had an opportunity to share with the board the, where we are with our career readiness. In, in past conversations, we've talked about career readiness typically kind of K5, and then we've talked about middle school electives, and then we talked about high school around the idea of CTE. school around the idea of CTE. What we have really worked towards and what I hope that you will notice through this presentation is a goal to bring all of this together under one umbrella and begin to see some kind of horizontal articulation here with career readiness through, through CTE. So that was, that's the goal of this presentation and to allow for all board members really have an understanding for both the breadth and then the depth of our programming because it's, this is not your father's work, you know, shop class anymore. This has changed dramatically, or homework, I should say, from that standpoint.
His mother's homework.
Homework is homework, right. It has changed dramatically. And so we really wanted to share with you where we are currently and both where we've been, where we are and where we're going. And we're very pleased to have Mike leading this, this particular department along with Christine, as again, we're bringing some coherence to our programming and to our thinking across career readiness.
Rich, ready for us to jump in?
Go for it.
Do we need to hold it? Okay, we will hold the microphone. Okay, Rich, thanks for the introduction.
You're welcome.
I think it's important to share with the board just a little bit, a little bit of a backstory on our journey over the last six years, and then I'll let Mike jump in. When we hired Bill Turner back in 2019, Bill Turner began as a director that oversaw Troy College and Career High School as well as career technical education and career readiness. And Bill had a lot of wonderful ideas that he brought forward that started our motion around our work at TCHS and also started to lay some of the groundwork around how we can begin to embed career readiness K through 12 across the district. As you know, Bill transitioned out and when that happened, we had an opportunity to really reflect on the role that he had and the work that was ahead for TCHS and recognizing that we needed a full-time person at that high school. And we were able to separate that role out a little bit at that time. During that interim and before Mike came on board, Troy College and Career launched some career readiness itself, so we have a careers course that's there. And an instrumental person in that work was Danielle Clifford. Danielle is our support person of the year last year in the district, and she has moved over in the last year to directly support Mike in the work that we're doing around career readiness and CTE. So she's been instrumental at the ground level, working through what this can look like in classrooms. And over the course of the last six months, Mike's taken the reins and really had an opportunity to collaborate. Mike's team, not only does he have Danielle, but he works directly with Ron Heolian over in Teaching and Learning, who you all know well, in the role that he plays in Technology Integration, and then Charlie Toll. So Charlie Toll is a teacher out of Larson Middle School. He's a phenomenal middle school technology-based teacher. He has release time that's built into his schedule to be able to move forward our career readiness, and Mike will talk a little bit about that in a little bit. But that team allows Mike to have tentacles that reach into our middle school, into our high school, and then across the organization. And then he's supported by myself and Natalie and the Teaching and Learning team, and I think we've been off to a great start. Just recently, we were able to share with you our new guidelines for parents that we sent out. That's the first time we've had a document, at least in a while, that outlines our involvement in, for our students in career and college readiness courses. So I think that's a couple little highlights and stuff that's going on. But Mike, I'm going to hand you the microphone here and let you walk through this with our board.
I'm not a Mike guy, so.
We are going to, sorry.
No, you're good.
We are going to try and work through K8 and then take a pause and answer any questions you might have about K8, and then we'll jump into 912 and take a pause. So that way we can move through the slides.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, you can go on to the next slide. First thing I want to talk about quickly is in 2018, Michigan really invested in career readiness throughout K12. And a lot of the things that you're going to see here today are outlined by them in terms of the sequencing of how a career readiness program should run. So in K5, they call that career awareness. I'll go over the things below that momentarily on the slides later on. As they leave elementary, they're refining their focus. It's a narrow focus and they're exploring. They still don't know right yet what they want to do, what they want to go into, but they're still exploring. We want to provide them the opportunity to do so. And then when they get to high school, that's really the preparation phase. That's the phase where they're really narrowing their focus, digging in even deeper. And what we're doing is providing a lot of different pathways for students to dive into because we know there's no pathway for one, there's many pathways that students can take. Something that we're doing a good job of is embedding Portrait or Learner that was developed over three years ago, and we've identified the six Cs as something that we really want our students to live into, be able to demonstrate by the time they leave here. So the six Cs are embedded in interview processes, in projects, just so we have that tie-in, that consistency. So one source of funding that, that we have is from Oakland County, and that's the career readiness allocation. And for us to continue to receive these funds, they, they send out annually three different targets that we have to meet. One target is around Zello, that is the EDP platform that we currently are using. We have two different goals, K5 and then 612. I'll get into that further in the presentation. But again, Oakland County is stressing the importance of integrating EDPs in the elementary while the state doesn't, but the county sees merit in starting them early because if we don't start the students early, we're off to a late start. We've got to start in K5 so that they're prepared to move on to middle and high school. Six to 12, we hit all students. I've been working a little bit with special education to see if we can find to what their EDP modification looks like if they cannot, cannot complete the ones through Zello. So I've been working with them to see if we can update and find tune so it's more, more meaningful process for them. As you get to middle school, we have a platform called Pathpool, and that is, it's, it's pretty cool. It's, if you're a teacher and you want someone to guest speed come in, guest speed will virtually, you just type in a topic, and then the program will reach out to people that are already invested in, in doing so, and someone will pop in and say, I can come in on this date. So if you're looking for an architect, they can be from California, they can be chiming in and giving your students a presentation and allow them to ask questions. So one target is that we have to provide two events or two activities or two times of, of guest speakers for the five industries that they deem important. So it's going to get a little confusing because Oakland County has identified five important industries, but the state has six career zones that we also have to live into as well. There is overlap, but it's a little confusing. Then lastly, the elementary and high school targets, these are the activities. These are, it says student family events or professional learning, but when I talk to the county, these are, these are your daily lessons. These are daily activities. So any exposure to the five industries that they outline counts for this.
So I think what's important about these targets, we're seeing included them here is because these are the things that are set outside of the district and we are required to hit these in order to receive 100% of the career readiness funding that we have. So we have a metric structure for accountability in the district, and Mike keeps that in, in order to assure that we hit all of these targets.
Can I ask a question? So is it the Oakland County School Board that sets the targets or who sets these targets?
Great. So Nancy's question, in case we didn't hear it, I'll repeat it, is who sets these targets? So Mike, tell me.
Yeah, we work directly with our consultant, and the consultant here's from Jared Randy, who's the head of all those schools for the career readiness department.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So K5, why start early? I don't think I have to tell this group, but, but I will anyways. As, as a dad, I think a lot of the work that I do stems back to how I'd want my child to go through school. And the academics is, is so important, but also the self-discovery of who you are as a person and growing that confidence to be able to find your passion is equally, or I would say more important than anything else. So to start exposing students to, to jobs that they don't even know exists is truly important, because if they don't hear it by fourth grade, they're most likely not going to go into or pursue that career. So it's important to start early. Like I said here, so the best practices, these I adopted from the Michigan Career Development Model. So the six career zones, as you can see on your right-hand side, do overlap with the five industries that Oakland County has, has set for us. I did have folders to hand out, but they're locked up in services right now, so I apologize for that. But anyway, so the six career zones, we need to expose all students K5 to those six career zones by the time they leave. And part of our job is to make sure that we systemically create a system so that students are getting those exposures K5. So the way we set that out is something that our team is developing right now. Some of the things that we're doing right now, we have the EDPs, first through fifth grade. We have met our targets. There's one school that is still working, but we have met our targets. We're ahead of the game, which is a great thing to, to be able to say. Talent portfolio, start in third grade, that's another Michigan legislative law that in seventh grade, students are supposed to start portfolios, but we started earlier, which is great. So the talent portfolio starts in third grade and progress all the way as they are seniors. Right now, we have media as an elective. They are the ones that are spearheading right now in the elementaries our career readiness work. They're doing a fantastic job. I collaborate with them weekly to get all the things they're doing, so I can report that to Oakland Schools. Some of you came out to see the STEMi. STEMi we have for fourth and fifth grade students that covers all career zones and the industries. So that's a great event for students to kind of whet their appetite, see what's out there right before they get to middle school, so they can start to think about the elective that they might want. And then just the grade-level activities like your guest speakers assemblies. The things that we want to work on for future growth is we want to expand the exposure of the career zones to all classrooms. So right now, that's, that's dedicated to media right now, but we need all classroom teachers in classrooms to embrace the career readiness. It could be something as simple as having a six-career zone poster, and as you're talking about a certain subject, just pointing to it and talking about a couple careers that it can relate to. So we're looking at easy things that we can implement to really increase our exposure. The family engagement, while we do have it, we can always improve it, we can always add. Just listening to you guys beforehand, the things that you guys do and our community members are doing, we can bring that into the schools so that we can share our experiences with the students to see what truly is out there. Then I put a picture of the bridge because I truly believe if, if we don't have that six-through-eight career exploration, we have that gap, that bridge is broken, you're on one side or the other you can't get across. So the shift from awareness to exploration, we're, we're getting more into, okay, this is my passion, this is what I love to do, how can I explore this in more depth? And that's when you get into the exploration phase. So again, like I just said, more self-discovery, experiential learning, and in the middle schools, we have some course offerings that can gear them towards really what they want to do at the high school level. And the best practices, so talk about tough, now you're going from six to 17 career clusters that we need to expose our students to. It looks like a lot, but when you break it down, it's not that bad. So if we intentionally build out our system where we are every single day pointing to a specific career and a career cluster, we will be able to hit those sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade. There's no doubt about that. So again, best practices kind of goes back to what it was in elementary, continuation of EDP and talent portfolio, more exploration in all classrooms, not just the elective courses. The current practices is EDP continuation, talent portfolio. We have an eighth-grade parent night at the high schools to help the transition from middle school to high school. We have career readiness activities embedded in gen ed courses. While we do have that, it's in silos. Part of my, my journey is to capture everything that we do and to be able to build out it systemically so we have equity amongst buildings. And then we have the culminating eighth-grade interview, which is a, a great opportunity for our students to showcase who they are, their passions, and the projects they've done, tie it to the, the six Cs and to our career readiness journey. The, the growth is, we've been talking as a team that we want to review our current elective offerings, and we want to expand, and we want to align with, with the high school level. Right now, there, there is a little gap in what we're offering and, and we're not really giving the students what they need in terms of being able to decide their next steps. We are, but not to the full extent. So that's something that we're going to revisit, we're going to work on to make sure that students are fully aware what their next steps could be, what it could look like, and how to get there. Try to give parents and students that, that comfort in that there's a pathway for everybody, you've just got to direct it to that pathway.
So on our next slide, we pick up talking a little bit about high school, which then we'll introduce CTEs. So we're going to pause and see if there's any questions you have about K8.
I do, but I want to let others have a chance.
So when we look at the, the career zones or career areas that need to be introduced at every level, that's not necessarily all at once in, in one year, right? So like the, at the middle school level, the 15 or 17, the 17, that would be throughout their time.
Yes, yes. Same with elementary, K5, they should leave fifth grade knowing about the six career zones. So that's what I meant, how we can, we can build it out the way we want to, like first grade can, can be dedicated towards a specific zone, or we can have two zones per grade level. So that's something that we can build out. Currently, we hit them all, but it's, it's, we could be more intentional with, with how we're doing this, so we get deeper into those career zones.
The, the one, I think it's great for kids to start exploring these things earlier. I just want to make sure we're also doing it in a way where it's like, by the time you're in ninth grade, be like, you can take one of these 17 career paths and that's it, right? Like this, you want to, you want to provide the opportunity to know what's out there, but also that, you know, the fact that the state of Michigan or Oakland County decided it's five or six is maybe not the, the world of possibilities. I don't know, I don't, you know, I don't have a specific suggestion, but I also don't want to silo our kids.
I don't know if you guys wanted to respond?
I think it's important to know that those zones have, the zones can include many, many careers. They just try to cluster zone careers to give it a name and a concept, and we start with that concept and then we dig deeper. But I hear what you're saying, and we shouldn't be limited to just what's there. We want kids to know that there are jobs that, that we can't even tell them about that will exist for them when they get there, and maybe even zones that we can't tell them about that will exist when they get there.
I was just curious, with the elementary school media classes kind of leading the charge, and I'm guessing that you're working with them on kind of tracking that, how do you know who's doing what at the middle school level?
So right now, I, I communicate with Charlie. Charlie Toll's my, my head of middle school right now. So he takes, we have forums that, that teachers submit of what they're doing, what career cluster, career zone that it hits, and then if they can, I ask them for a picture to, to supplement that, a short description. So I'm gathering all that information. As my first year, I just need to see what we're doing, and then I can better find to where we might need to fill in those gaps and where we can grow as a district. So that's how we gather.
Great, thanks.
I have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. The first question is, you know, how the, like the robotics team, they come and talk to the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers at different times. Do we include that also as a way to expose, as one of those sessions that are exposing our elementary kids to careers, for example, in one of those boxes?
Glad you mentioned that. One of the things that, that I've been working with our CTE folks specifically, but it can include more groups as well, is to have our high schoolers visit the elementaries to talk about their experiences, or even have like a little tour day of the elementary students coming in to explore some of the opportunities at the middle school and high school. So I think you're right, that's one of the, the areas that I see that we can grow and improve upon in terms of exposing them to those programs early, but also to show them that it's not scary, familiarize themselves with, with the middle school and the high schools, so when they get there, they're not, they're not in awe. So that's, that's a great.
The other question is, when I went to a conference, one of the schools that is exposing careers very early are very deliberate in picking the books that are in these classrooms. For example, seeing Angela is an engineer and it's a book, and they read it as normal reading, but, but they deliberately put that book to expose kids into that area. And similarly, they deliberately buy books specifically that cover the different careers that they want. They may not always have them, they're children's books, you may not always find them, but when they are, it's integrating into that. I don't know if you've thought about it. I don't know if you've thought about it?
Yeah, the media specialists have been great. They have shown me some platforms that we have, and I can go on and build like, almost like a playlist of books. And so for March is Reading Month, they have been providing, we put together books for them to explore all the career zones, and like you said, so it's, it's.
Yeah, okay. Okay, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is, right now, in the elementary schools, from what I remember, it was, it's only in the media center, right, that they expose that? And whatever you were saying that you're planning on exposing in each classroom, that's for the future?
Yeah, they're doing it in pockets, classroom teachers. I don't know if the intentionality is there. I mean, our teachers are doing some good work in there, and they are doing some of this work, but we want to make sure that it's systemic and that all teachers are doing this, so all of our kids can get those experiences. But right now, the intentionality is in media. They do the EDPs, they do specific career readiness activities, and they report that to me, so I can report it to the county.
What does EDP stand for?
Educational Development Plan. So it's to students to understand their career interests, who they are as people, and it aligns to specific careers, and then, not getting too much in depth, but there are other things you can do with the platform to help students explore colleges. You can combine the Common App on there, you can do a lot of things on there, but it's to drive the student's educational pathway forward to help them decide what classes to take in high school.
So that kind of gets into my question. I'd be interested in seeing an EDP, because, you know, I got, I don't know if you were at the conference, but we had an opportunity a number of years ago to, when we were at a national school board conference, to go visit a school that had, it was an elementary school, that had really taken career exploration to a level I've never seen before. And they didn't have computer programs or anything. In fact, we went through this exercise, they had these big posters with maps, and you went through and kind of could identify, am I more of a creator, or am I more of an analyst or something? So I was so jazzed by that. I came back and I spent a lot of time with Danielle, because, you know, that's when Zillow, Zello?
Zello.
Zello is houses, yeah. Zello gave me more. And I was so excited to see that the program was kind of, you know, had taken what this school was doing. And so I become, you know, and we've done, and I do a program at TCHS, Women of Tomorrow, we've done some work with the girls, having Danielle come in, because this, this ability to kind of know yourself before you run off and say, oh, I want to be a nurse, or oh, I want to be an engineer, is so, so important. And what we've seen is that, you know, if you're a creator, you understand what your likes and interests are first, and then you could be a creator in healthcare, you could be a creator in education, you could be a creator in manufacturing. And so I'm really interested in how we're progressing with students kind of understanding and learning about what their own interests, maybe capabilities, talents are. And then even, you know, I mean, we had a real interesting discussion with Zello, because, you know, there are people who say, you know, I want to be such and such, and then it's like, well, you're going to be in an office. And it's like, I can't work in an office. And so it's giving, I mean, that seems so basic, you know, but kids don't know, and you know, as a parent, you know, you don't want your kid to be doing that when you're paying college tuition and realize, oh, I want to be an engineer, and then you finally see when it's like, I hate this, I don't ever want to be this. So I'm really interested in how we're having kids do the self-exploration, and do we start to see that in the maturity of the EDP, so that they're outlining, you know, kind of what their interests and things that excite them are?
Absolutely. So do you have a chance, when Danielle showed, do what it looked like in the elementary?
I didn't see that we were looking at what it would look like in high school at the time.
Gotcha, gotcha. So in elementary, it's, to be honest, it's mostly gameplay. It's there are, it goes to six different places, the park, the construction zone, and they're just playing, and then they answer some basic questions, and then that's it. So it's basically just exposing them to the different career zones. Once they hit sixth grade, then it really starts to shift to more of a, okay, you take your interest inventory. Yes, it can suggest careers, but the important part of that is, it's not just Zello that we want telling the student what they should do. They're doing this with a counselor, they're doing this with someone that's guiding them, because a lot of our students see these, like, I don't want to be this. Like, you don't have to. That's a suggestion, you click that X, it's gone. So this is just something to get them started, but I really think that that human connection is also important, not only with the counselor student, but with the parent as well. So with that team, that's how we're trying to get that student to identify the different pathway that they should take.
Okay.
This might be actually a good visit opportunity, invite board members into a lesson where they're working directly with students and see how various students are maneuvering their way through the various programs. So that's one we could consider.
Because if the end result of this, I mean, to me, we've achieved success if a student leaves high school with, you know, some self-understanding of the things that really excite them, the things they want to do, maybe the things that, you know, people like to do, things they're good at. And so with, but also with an understanding that they can purpose those skills in different directions. And what I see, you know, because I do some work at the university level, I see kids coming, I'm going into medicine, you know, or I'm going into, you know, they're picking the industry without totally understanding whether their skills align with that. And I'd rather see kids say, you know, I'm a problem solver, that's what I'm good at, and I can problem solve in a variety of different industries. And it's interesting, because in the department that I'm affiliated with at a university, we encourage our students, because of the nature of the degree, go try manufacturing one summer internship, go try healthcare another, and by the time they get a degree, they, again, are reinforcing their skill set, but they may find, I hate manufacturing, but man, I come alive in healthcare. But they will never know that, because traditionally, they may have chose something, and it's like people with that skill set go into manufacturing, and then they're miserable, or they've wasted their degree.
I was going to keep it at the middle school level for a minute. I know that I had mentioned this to Christine as well, but I recently had somebody that I went in the Troy School District from elementary through high school, and she reminded me when we were in middle school, we actually had seven period instead of six. And so when she said that, then I remembered that I had banned all three years, I had language all three years, plus I had all my port classes, and yet we still took woodshop and life skills and all of these things. And so, you know, at some point, that change was made, I'm sure there was, you know, there was a reason for it. But to me, what you're talking about, what's happening at elementary, but especially at the middle school level, in order to find out what you like and what you're good at, you need to try lots of different things. And if you don't have, if you're a banned kid, right, and then you decide to also take language in eighth grade, you can't do anything else. You have limited room for exploration. And so, you know, I think that so, it might not be something we can go back to, but you know, I know some of the electives at the middle school level are a quarter instead of a semester. Is there a possibility to have more option where you're not adding hours to the day, potentially more teachers, but maybe there's more things that are a quarter instead of a full semester? So kids do have that opportunity to explore.
To sort of build on what you said already, too, I was thinking as you were talking about that, about our students who require intervention at the middle school level, that might be another group that could be potentially underserved, as we're trying to provide reading or whatever sort of intervention those kiddos need. So something to consider as you broaden out your planning. Thinking, too, about like, where does this fit in the, I'm trying to go back to where we are with all this mission, vision, values, goals, right? Where does this fit in our, are the district's big picture? Like, where does it sit in the district improvement plan? What specific metrics, just things to think about? Are you thinking about tracking, like, how many exactly, does every single elementary kid have an EDP? Like, every single one, 100%? Or are you working toward it, and like, what's the trajectory for that? I was, I've never heard of Zello?
Zello.
Zello. I don't say Zello, I don't know what that is. Is it the, it's that two classes minimum, three, two classes at each school at minimum have to have three career town activities in a year? That's what the little slide says? Is that, like, are we hitting that now?
Yeah, so we have to, Oakland Schools looks at K2 and 3, 5 as grade bands, and we have to pick at least one grade, and each of those grade bands needs to hit 90%. We've hit that, and I'm pushing to make sure we go above and beyond, that each student, even if they're in first, third, or fifth grade, media has to spend at least one class period on the EDP. And then something that I wanted to do this year was, once all the media specialists had time to get everybody on, I would like to send an invitation to parents to be able to log in with their own account and track, not track, but to work alongside their child to see what they're doing, what are their interests, so that you guys can have those conversations at home. So yes, every student should touch Zello, but second and fourth grade are the ones that Oakland County is looking for specifically, that we hit 90%.
And that's the metric you're following right now for us, too? That 90%?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, I would go further and say at least one class period for every child, so that they have exposure to it. Because I don't want any child not to have exposure to career readiness activity.
Cool. And it seems sort of implied that the media teachers have the professional development they need, but I was at the soft spot for making sure teachers feel prepared for what they're supposed to do.
Yes.
Is there some sort of like lane for them to learn? Is this an evolution of the work in media?
Yeah, Ron Keolian has been doing a lot of the work. Danielle has also been a big support. I always tell all the media specialists, if you don't feel comfortable, reach out to us. And Danielle and I have actually gone out to an elementary to help facilitate and lead one of the sessions first, and then, once they feel comfortable, they take over from there.
We're going to jump into 912.
With the segue you had, because you're right, not every child is going to leave saying, I know exactly what I want to do. So the whole point of exploration and preparation, yes, try to prepare our kids for when they leave, but that might look like something exposure, I hate this, I don't want to go into this. That's good, too, because they need to see all the things they don't like, so when they leave high school, they're not doing that as they're paying tuition and changing majors three, four, five, six, seven times. So the whole point of career prep, again, is to narrowly focus. Now, we're focusing even on a deeper level, the career clusters, we can go on actually, because it's going to, the career clusters, the EDPs, the talent portfolio should become more robust, and then also the family engagement opportunities. I know we have some already, but again, even at the high school, I think we can improve upon our family engagement. So right now, it's to recap, the EDP talent portfolios, but what I'd like to spend a little more time on, and there'll be more slides that I'll go more in depth, our CTE programs, our OTAC dual enrollment, LTU, Lawrence Tech Early Middle College, our CAP and CAPS opportunities. I know, right?
One will have to change eventually.
Future growth, and I didn't include this in elementary, but I'm going to say it now, is our eighth grade, we do have eighth grade interviews, exit interviews. I would love to have fifth grade exits and senior exits. I think it's very important for students to have that opportunity to share what they've done as they're leaving one milestone and going to the next. So those are things that we're starting to build out as well, and would like to implement in the next year or two. Getting into the career programs, let's just jump right into CTE. I was a former CTE teacher, so I have, you know, heart for them, because there is a lot that goes into it. So just so you guys know, there are so many components that goes into what a CTE program is. You actually have to apply to the state, you have to have a teacher that's certified. If they come, they have to have 4,000 hours of business and industry experience. So they do have that, the skill set to teach these students the hands-on work that they're doing. We can go on to the next. So the four different components, you have the classroom instruction, they're in the lab, they're hands-on, they're doing the work. Work-based learning in this instance is just, there's a circle of activities that students have to be exposed to. We've got to report this to the state. So a work-based learning opportunity could be job shadowing, it could be a guest speaker, it could be, it's any touch point with business and industry. So our goal is to, yes, expose them to different businesses to see if they have an interest in pursuing that. And then the student leadership are your CTSOs, so DECA, BPA, we typically here in Troy have a strong showing in those competitions, so that's a great opportunity for the kids as well. We currently have 13 programs here in Troy. I just wanted to list those, but you can.
We renamed mechatronics, didn't we?
What's that?
We renamed mechatronics just a month ago.
So, yeah, engineering was changed to mechatronics, but it just has the specifics of what is covered. It's a combo, it's mechatronics, engineering. Yeah.
It was engineering, and then it became mechatronics, and it's now engineering again.
Yep, yep. And then BMO is new. Last, we have Richard Cooper teaching our BMO courses, that's Business Administrative, Administration Management Operations. So that is something that is a great addition to our offerings here. Some of the metrics that we have are enrollments, and then the concentrator number is really important in terms of measuring. So 287 students completed a CTE program. So that means they went and took every course needed to cover all the competencies, and then they were offered a credential. So they're able to leave if they pass it with a business industry certified credential.
One of the things just to note on this chart that is important and we work through, and I think just at the board governance level to understand, is we go through hiring, and when we hire teachers, sometimes we're not able to find teachers who are CTE certified teachers. And when you're not a CTE certified teacher, we can still teach the class, because they may have the degree in the course, but they may not be a CTE certified teacher. We cannot count them in our CTE enrollment, and so we don't receive added cost dollars from the state. And so we aren't able to claim them on this chart. So if you were to look at this chart, and you might look across finance, for instance, and you see it go from 134 to 62, it's not because our enrollment in finance dropped. We still have just as many kids in finance, but we have a teacher who's not CTE certified who's teaching finance right now. And so we aren't able to claim them for added cost dollars. So that's something we continue to work on, we look on alternate pathways to be able to get to that certification. But in what's coming out of teacher preparation right now, we don't have a lot of teachers who are coming out with this certification. So we're working the best we can to be able to build it internally.
And just to add, the state recognizes that as well. It's hard to find business and industry that want to transition right into education. So they're working with us and able to give us opportunities for a teacher to go two years, take classes, and then reduces the hours of business and industry to 2,000. So there's a little more flexibility that we have in hiring teachers and still regain the funding.
Are there opportunities, I know again, at the university level, this happens, where during the summer, they, I mean, it's almost like they do an internship, like a student might do an internship at an industry. Do we have, or, I mean, is that help qualify a teacher for CTE?
It does, but they have to reach 2,000 hours. And so even 40-hour weeks, I mean, that's a slow way in that process. But yes, we have, and in my career here in Troy, we've even had teachers go through that process. So we have had them do it, but it is a long process to go through.
2,000 hours is one thing. I mean, you have.
Forty years of summer.
Then going on to other opportunities, we have our dual enrollment courses. So when students, it's not exhausting curriculum anymore, they changed the language, but when a student has taken courses where they have maxed out their ability at the high school, Right now, we have 66 students at Troy High that are taking dual enrollment courses, and then we have 54 at Athens.
I think important to note, just in thinking about dual enrollment, there's also opportunities in dual enrollment that are very tightly tied to career. Some of our students have taken, there's the firefighting courses that take, that take place at OCC, that students have enrolled in, they've looked at different, you know, I, I have the great fortune of being able to sign off on all of our dual enrollment courses, so I see all the classes that all of our kids are taking. And as Mike said, about 10 years ago, the state changed, it used to state you had to exhaust the curriculum before, in your school district before you were able to go. Now it just has to be a non-conflicting course. So you can't go take dual enrollment in something that we offer, you have to take that with us. But if you wanna take Italian, and we don't offer Italian, you can go take Italian at, at OCC or OU. And so we've had a lot of students who've been able to pursue their passions in different ways through dual enrollment, and that's a phenomenal way for our students to do that.
And that's where actually the EDP also ties in. So when I was an assistant principal, when a student would approach me to take a dual enrollment class, I'd ask them, what are your goals? What are your aspirations? What class? How is this going to help with your future aspirations? So there, there are more components to taking a dual enrollment course, but yes, the career planning and readiness is, is part of that, so.
Did those numbers include TCCHS?
Those were, no, they did not. Another pathway, I will say, is the Oakland Schools Tech Campus, or OTAC, it's commonly referred to. Right now, we have 22 students from Troy High enrolled, and 73 at Athens. The asterisk shows that we do have nine students that are enrolled in a program where it's a combination of OTAC, but that they're also enrolled in the OCC Early Middle College program.
This is the Panhandle Tech Campus, so it's also Roydok?
The southeast is, is where our.
That's Roydok.
Yes, yep. Well, starting, it was this year, I believe, right? It was this year?
It was this year for.
Yeah. So we partnered with Lawrence Tech, and specifically in the certification area of cybersecurity and the associates in computer science, we're offering our students a five-year program to leave with that associate's in computer science. Currently, we have five students enrolled.
And how early do they start to take the classes?
10th grade. They do some summer work between ninth and 10th, but 10th grade is where they really start easing into the courses. I know this was talked about the board, I think it was last week, but the CAP program has grown exponentially. You can tell that it is a wonderful program. We have some awesome students, and I was so happy to be able to attend the match day to see how, how awesome of students that we have here in the district, and, and the business and industry that's willing to work with us. So that's only gonna grow from here on out, cause it's more than doubled this past year.
And then the last program that we wanted to talk about is a little bit of a sneak peek forward for us as an organization. We are exploring and, and learning more about the CAPS program, which stands for the Center for Advanced Professional Studies, and it is an, an organization, a network that exists nationally, where they're committed to connecting students to industry, very similar to our conversation for our CAP program, but more deeply embedded into the curriculum of the school day, and what that looks like specifically for juniors and seniors as they move their way through. So we began having a conversation about this CAPS program as we were thinking about the next iteration of what our career readiness and CTE programs look like specifically related to our work at Athens High School, as we think about the redesign of that building. So it's pushed us to think about facilities and access, and what those partnerships might look like inside of our schools, rather than kids always having to leave us. At the, the first week of this month, I had the opportunity to go to Kansas City, sorry, last month, now that we are in March, the first week of February, to go to Kansas City and visit the original CAPS program with about eight representatives from the Troy School District, teachers from both Troy High and Athens and Vernon. Mike was supposed to join us, but wasn't able to make it, and we had a phenomenal visit of two different CAPS programs there, enough of a connection, a natural connection to the work that we're already doing, that we're going to continue to move forward with exploring what that looks like. So I just share with you that I think it's a really great, it's, it's a really great opportunity for us to start to build connections nationally with other organizations who are interested in furthering this deep work of business and industry partnerships, and also encouraging our teachers at Troy High School and at Athens to reflect on the work that they're doing in their career and college readiness and their CTE programs, and look at how they might push themselves to grow and learn in the connection with this, you know, it's a low-stakes network, right? There's, there's nothing but great things that can be gained by them partnering. So one of the areas that was particularly interesting to me was in the second school that we visited down in Kansas City, they have a robotics program in their school. They built that, they built the curriculum in partnership with a few other schools nationally to be able to have a really nice opportunity. It's a two-year program for students, and then it also relates to the work that's going on outside of school for those kids in their robotics club. So, I mean, if you know anything about Troy, you know that we have a few robotics programs throughout our organization, a few, a few dozen. So it's just, I think, some really nice fits for us when we think about the work that's ahead. So there'll be more to come on this. This will be something that will naturally go through conversation with department heads and classroom teachers, but it's, I think, the seed of an idea that will influence where we go next.
Was that in Bloom, Kansas?
So it's in, so the original CAPS program is in Blue Valley, Kansas, and then we visited next door in Lenoxa, Kansas, which is where the others, the CTEC CAPS program is. But they are all over Kansas, because that's where it started, and then it has grown across the nation. So there's a real big group of them kind of in the Kansas Midwest, so more southern Midwest, and then actually in Utah. So like, and in that area, there's a lot of industry connection there, so.
So is this like real-time, where they, kids would be working on a project in school? Or is it, is there a virtual component to this, where they may be working with a company that necessarily isn't geographically located with them, but they're still working on a project under the tutelage of both their teacher and their son or daughter?
I suppose it could be either. The examples that we saw were real-time, we're with a mentor that was there, and we had students who were working on real problems in that industry with that, with that partner, and they were trying to solve them, and they were bringing it back. So one of the students that we, who I interacted with, he was working at a construction site, but his, he wasn't working in construction, he was actually working in engineering, and they had a mount to be able to pull a motor on the construction site that kept failing. And so they were trying, they engaged him in how to be able to redesign this mount, because they were, they were consistently failing, and they could not figure out what was going wrong with it. So he, he had built out a whole prototype, and then they had a welding location there as well, so he was able to build it, and they were prototyping it and designing it. So it was, and, and he was getting real-time feedback, they were taking it out to the job site, they were using it. I asked him if he was gonna get paid when they started marketing these, and he laughed, and he said, that's not the intent. I was like, well. So, you know, like that real-time, like problem solving and being a part of it. Another piece, another thing that we saw was this incredible simulation lab for the health sciences, where they had, I know you're not supposed to call them dummies, but they had mannequins, but ones that were, you know, like ones that would bleed and cry, and, you know, just like real feedback on the life sciences, physical therapy, we saw global business. So within the CAPS program, there's strands that exist, and then within the strands, there's deeper courses that exist. So the number one piece of feedback they gave us is start with one. Right? And we already have really incredible programs. So Alena Wahlberg, who's the business teacher at Troy High School, she was with us, and Rob Holder, who's one of our business teachers at Athens, both of them have a significant amount of life experience in teaching business. They both were like, oh yeah, this is great, like we could do, this would be a great way to take it to the next level. And so there's just a nice way in, and our hope is to be able to continue to build that kind of excitement, and to recruit others to come to the table in looking at opportunities for our kids.
And then the reason I ask is there's already a program again at the college level, and it's, it's virtual, but it's supported by, you know, companies like Apple, Microsoft, and Amazon. And they provide a project, and actually students, there's a global, you can do a global component of this, because if you are a student that, you know, gets to get comfortable working virtually with people from around the world, and so they offer this, but it's all project-based. And again, most of this is in the tech area, because you can do it virtually. But it is a great way for students to do project-based work. In this case, again, learning how to work virtually, and a lot of tech workers have to look up how to work virtually, or, you know, they can kind of do it virtually. And then they get a global, who may be, who may be sitting in the United States, or a student from India, or a student from France, whatever. And those have become super, super popular, and it's made me really think about, is there an analog? It's great, because I know we have a support in the business community, and unfortunately, because of our location, we've got, you know, good physical problems, projects here, but, you know, it may be, you know, equally exciting to invite some employers that, you know, are resident in this area.
And you know Nancy Sinis, you said that it made me think of, we were actually invited to apply, so Harvard approached us and said, we've got grad students here who are looking to work on family and community engagement challenges, X, Y, and Z challenges. If you're interested, you can apply for their support, you would get a little consultancy group who would help work through that process with you. And so they reached out to us to offer that. So it's very similar to that idea, it's a great idea.
Good stuff, really good stuff. Any questions, comments, and thoughts?
I have one comment. Looks like there's a lot, a plethora of choices for kids and, and parents for that matter. So just like, we know how we had the college and career fair, I wonder if we, if you ever thought about having some kind of, you know, open house or fair kind of setup where parents and kids could come and see the options that are available in high school for them to get involved in.
Yeah, and I'll give you like a parent night as well, like perhaps add it on to the curriculum night, like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Focused on the choices that you have to do with the career staff that we have.
Absolutely.
Not just classes. I know we have that already for our incoming parents, we have what classes you need to take, what you need to do, what do you expect in high school, those things we do already. But I don't think we covered this at all, so I'm wondering if that would be useful for that.
Almost use the same expression as you showed us at the beginning, elementary parents like make us aware, and, you know, help our kids explore, et cetera.
And last question, how much of these are available for IA students also?
I think that's a good question. I think one of the challenges that's important to remember about our IA structure is that there's a chosen curriculum with a set path. So we, students have to be able to move through their, their eight courses, and then take their assessment, and then they have to work through CAS, and they have to work through, you know, all of the other, you know, extended essay, all of the other pieces that are there. So there's not, there's a choice program when you go to that building. So I think one, one of the things you could say is, it's one of the, right, we, we know it's one of the choices, it's one of the incredible choices when you're a Troy student, that that is also offered to you, but that's offered to you as a package. So there's not an IB, IB plus, where you add on IBCTE, right? Like you can't go to OTAC and IB, you can't go to, you know, OTAC and BMDCTE courses. So I think it's offered through extracurriculars, but it's not, and through our CAP program.
CAP students.
Student, right?
I see the cap, yeah.
So those are the areas where I think as an organization, we try to ensure that we're including all.
So how do we expose our IA kids to these career selections then?
So the EDP, the EDP process.
Yeah, that's, that's, they complete that.
Is required.
I'm gonna try. There is a required career internship for graduation, so typically the kids do that when they have like a week-long period, so they're, they can find their own person they wanna match up that they're interested in, or the school will help them match up. So the idea, kind of the same thing, that they're getting at least, you know, a certain number of hours exposure to some sort of career industry, so that's unique to them, and it is the graduation.
Okay, so they get it through that.
And the EDP process is required for all of our students. So all of our students go through that same process of exploration and selection and feedback from that program.
So back to the EDP, I mean, I've done eighth grade interviews for many years, that's not an EDP wizard.
No, so wanting.
Portfolio of.
Yes. One thing that we're gonna add this year are components of the EDP, because my suggestion was the whole point should be focusing on what they've done, but also exploring who they are and what their next steps are. And the EDP should help them with that. Could they ask them some questions about where do you wanna go next, or, so integrating some of those questions, I think, will help with, with the future path for that student.
Well, I feel like we're interested in education.
Sure. Yeah, that's great.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take a break.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started. So if I can ask the, the audience to take their seats. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is our superintendent evaluation training. So turn it over to Jordan Teague to train us.
Thank you, Dr. Philheart, and I had a chance, I think, to visit with all of you, and also my colleague Julia McMelkich from Calhoun's Abaha. It's fun to be back, and I was joking with a few of you, it doesn't seem like I've ever left and walked right back in. You know, Dr. Melk and I were joking, you know, same faces, different places.
Yeah, for many of you.
So we're, we're right back at it, it's like riding a bike again. So, but today I'm here to talk about superintendent evaluation training, and the tool of which the Troy School District has been using, I believe, for the last six years, as it relates to evaluating the superintendent. And we're here for, for two reasons. One, I think we've got some new board members, so a refresher for the current board, and also a formal training that's required by the statute for new board members, opportunity to do that. And then also there was some amendments to evaluation for teachers, administrators, and superintendents. In December of 2023, the legislature passed that, and they passed a bunch of amendments to collective RE rights in the state as it relates to public employees, and one of those included a teacher evaluation right to bargain that, and then that's when they also passed some amendments and some new requirements for administrators and superintendents. So part of that law was that you had to do a new training about what the new department is. So, and we had to have that done by this school year. So we're also satisfying that new statute or requirement that we do a new training about the, about the new topic. Nothing groundbreaking after coming tonight, but just there'll be a couple of things that for those board members that have been on the board for a few years and have used this tool, you can say, oh, okay, that's a new department. Nothing, again, nothing super noteworthy, you better, you better spend time to talk about right this second. All right? On that one. Oh, I, I mean, I could probably, we might be all right by just scrolling. Yeah, yeah. It was on that one. All right. Dan's doing his best, he's not gonna interrupt. I'm gonna do the first half of the PowerPoint, and Julia's gonna, gonna take the second half. Julia was involved in the development of this one, we worked two years ago with McComb ISD. I guess I'll talk, talk, talk a little bit about that, we've got a couple of slides. I see not all of you have your iPads today, so we've got this on the screen, and you've all been given a copy of this, and you might have flipped through it already. But the origin of this tool, and how it's different than some of the other tools, like the tool you were using previously, the McComb ISD, when, when the, years ago, about 11 years ago, when there were amendments to the administrative evaluation, was getting frustrated with the current tools that were being used around the state, because they were one-size-fits-all. There were a couple of popular tools that were for any size school district, from the smallest school district that's got four buildings, to the larger school district, like Detroit Public or, or Yudica. So McComb ISD superintendent got involved and, and kind of talked to our firm about working with Oakland University about developing a local tool that could be more specific to metropolitan areas. So that was the genesis of Calhoun's Abaha getting involved in developing a tool. Lots of people say, how did Calhoun's Abaha develop an administrator? We have a superintendent tool, a central office administrator tool, and a building of a principal tool. How did a education law firm, you know, how did you get into evaluations here? How did a education law firm, you know, how did you get into the evaluations here in that business? And that's the genesis of how that happened. Macomb County started with wanting a localized superintendent evaluation tool that better fit the needs of a, kind of a metropolitan densely populated school, school district system. So we got that off the ground with, with the Open University professor and a couple of PhD students. And so we were able to, to develop a research-based tool. And with the focus on, and we'll cover this in a few of the slides very briefly, but the focus on having less domains, like one of the popular tools that would be used by the state that had 28 domains. So boards were trying to evaluate their leaders on 28 domains. That was one of the frustrations of some of the larger districts especially. A lot of those domains didn't apply or they were all weighted the same. So you, they wanted less domains and had it be more of a global, from a, more of a leadership-type tool. So you'll see how we did that. And of course, this board knows that we've been using the tool. We've kind of distilled it down to, to six domains. Well, 10 categories and then distilled it down into roughly six domains. So, so at any rate, that's more for the new board members of like, you know, why this tool? How did it come to be and why we're using it in charge? So, and started using it across all the school districts in, in Macomb County and then other districts that were around Macomb County said, we would be interested in that. So it's just kind of spread word of mouth and Macomb County was gracious enough to release that to whoever wanted to use it. So, so, you know, we don't, we, we, we don't have any commissions or we don't have any publication on this. This is just a tool that we developed that Macomb County ISD paid for and that, you know, we've been updating it, providing it to all our clients or whoever wants to use it, whether they're a client or not. So that's just a bit about the tool. So with all that said, I'm, I'm going to quickly, because I know we're the last one on the agenda standing between you and, and you're not going home and going a few hours before bed. I'm going to, I'm going to quickly kind of jump through a number of pages, hit some salient points. There are some statutory new requirements that Julia will cover about training that we'll, we'll hit on briefly. And to answer any questions you have, so that's, that's essentially, I think, the form of agenda for me. Couple basics statutory framework. This is the 1249 D of the Required School Code. That's the law that governs teacher and administrative evaluations in the state. Who must be evaluated? All administrators, central office, and anyone involved in instructional matters. Must be evaluated by the superintendent or visitor or designated. Superintendent must be evaluated by the school code. So, so you evaluate the superintendent, superintendent evaluates the principals for in a larger district like yours. You're going to have a, you know, deputy or assistant superintendent or director basically. This is a new change in the law. So this is, this is brand new. They changed it for teachers allowing, with teachers, they're allowing up to triennial evaluation for those teachers that are reading effectively. And with the, with the superintendent and administrators, they've, they've developed a new, a new option for school boards. This is specific to the superintendent evaluations we're doing tonight. But you as a board, historically, it was required it had to be annual. The new law now allows you to do it biannually if that was what you wish to do every two years. If the superintendent was highly effective or effective on three or more consecutive evaluations. In Dr. Majestee's case, he has been. So this would be something that if you were desirous to explore this option, you could. So you could switch to once every two-year evaluations cycle, given Dr. Majestee's evaluation. Some boards are opting to do that with longstanding folks that they, they're comfortable with and other boards aren't. So that, that's something you don't need to decide tonight, but that's an option that's available to you if you were inclined to, to, to work with Dr. Majestee on what that could look like.
But that's starting next year, correct? And we would still go with the plan we have for June this year and then?
Well, well, let me, so before I answer that, and maybe I missed the both on my understanding. Did you evaluate Dr. Majestee in December? You were talking about doing that change, you never did.
No, we were just doing it.
Okay, oh, okay, all right. I was, I was, maybe we had talked at one point about potentially switching to December cycle.
Yeah, I mean, because, because the board changes, but.
There's nothing in the statute that would preclude beginning your, your two years of having a nice evaluation next school year. However, because it's brand new, we don't know how all of the reporting is going to look. If they caught everything up, figuring out where's the issues with the impact. It might be better to do the evaluation this year than begin if you want to do it to have two years to do it.
One of the other big changes, and this is the second triangle of this slide. And this has happened with the teachers also. Historically, for the last number of years, there's been a four evaluation rating. And historically was highly effective, effective, minimally effective, and ineffective at some points. There were effective in every one of those four. They've made, they dropped it from four criteria, or four ratings to three. And they, I think they've come up with some more progressive language and just using effective and having some descriptors. So now they've dropped the concept of highly effective as being your rating. So now it's just three, first being effective, the second being developing, and the third being needing support. So that's what you're going to see. And we're going to cover a little bit about how we address that within our tool. But those are the three new statutory rating categories for everyone in public education, teachers and administrators. People have asked, we've got this, the last bullet of this slide. We always get asked, what's reported to the state? Is it all the subcomponents of the evaluation score that you're in the score, the superintendent or teacher? There's, what's reported to the state? It's only the overall evaluation rating. So, you know, in this case, Dr. Majestee can receive a ranking of, or a rating of effective, developing, or needing support. And there could be commentary. We have questioned, well, do you report the commentary the board has or any narrative the board has to say? Nope, this is literally an Excel spreadsheet which the district puts forward that's got.
There's a dropdown.
Drop down.
It only gives you three options.
Three options, so.
You have to put one of them in.
So that's, that's for every position from the superintendent to the assistant subs, directors, teachers. It's just a dropdown and there's no commentary, there's no caveats, there's no answers. It's just, it's just, that's the rating that's reported to the state.
And what is the state going to do with that?
Aggregate the data and report it out in some manner.
They've been collecting it for years in a year-end report. I don't know whose job it is in the district, but they get to go through for every single employee that put it in. And it's all available on your, my school data.
My school.
Yeah.
But it's not like they're going to take any action if, you know, somebody was developing year after year.
Just a quick point on that prior slide, Jordan, is just while the state has moved down to three rating categories, in our tool, we've maintained four. So we have a growth tool. The point is that we have to encourage growth in that dialogue between the board and superintendent. The highest rating category is labeled exemplary, so it's differentiated from the prior statute. And that is something that would be within the district that exemplary could not be reported to the state. This is also consistent with what all of the national tools have been doing with teacher evaluations. They haven't aligned those to the state of Michigan. They continue to choose four. And I think they've kind of similarly implemented in school districts where now the highest rating category is effective. So if he's, if a person scored on an exemplary, will it still be reported effective? Yes.
And, and about 15 slides will show you what the tool says and then how it would be reported. A new, another new requirement, they're requiring a mid-year progress report of the superintendent. And we've updated our tool to have a one-page mid-year progress report document. It's nothing elaborate. We decided that it would be prudent to keep it, keep it open-ended. Keep it geared towards the goals in which the superintendent and the board set. So it's a mid-year progress report. There would be a narrative format that the, that the superintendent would fill out and write about and report to the Board of Education during a mid-year meeting of some sort. So that's going to be a new agenda item that you're going to need to have on one of your agendas of a mid-year, mid-year progress report on the superintendent's evaluation. So that is going to be a new topic annually or for every year in which you're going to be doing it, doing, doing the superintendent's evaluation to have a placeholder in your yearly agendas for, for having a, having meetings with the, with the superintendent for a period of time to have him or her report out on their, on their mid-year progress reports.
So would we be able to do that in closed session? We're not evaluating, we are evaluating the superintendent mid-year or he's just doing a progress report on his school?
Is it a progress report on his schools?
So there's no reason to do that in a closed session?
People, boards have asked, is there any, you know, mid-year, what does that mean? The statute doesn't define what mid-year is. So we're having school districts pick a period of time in their agendas or depending on what the, how the flow of their, of their annual work is, when, when that fits best, so. You could do it in November, you could do it in December, you could do it in January. Now I'm saying it must be at the 180-day mark in the year.
So the shift from the prior statute where you would have the score an employee who's identifying problems with their performance, but you have the IP in mid-year. Now only for administrators, if every year they're evaluated. So because we're not looking for problems, schools could be essentially a restatement of a school setting that you do for that school year. You could incorporate those schools in your previous.
So question, if we choose to evaluate every other year and we haven't set any, I mean, we didn't evaluate him, so we didn't do any goals for this year. What is the mid-year evaluation report? Is it from the previous year's goals or what is that worth? They're making it optional for us to do every other year?
Sure. I would believe their intent, I can only speak to what their intent is and their assumption is that most organizations are doing goal-setting every year regardless of whether or not it's for evaluation purposes.
Okay.
But that, that's my best guess to tell of.
But also the mid-year is only required, it's, it's required each year you evaluate superintendent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
If you move to every two years.
It's mid-cycle essentially.
Yeah, well, yes. Or you could have a period of 118 months where you have nothing at all, so.
I see, okay.
Another new requirement that they put in the new law is that they gave superintendents the right to appeal their evaluation. So that would not be a statutory right that they had had previously. They could have had something written in their contract about their evaluations and the right to appeal or right to agreement procedure or arbitration regarding disputes, including their evaluations. But there was nothing in a stat, in any statute about that, how there is. So now they prescribe that new contracts entered into post-July 1, 2025 must include an appeal process concerning the evaluation process and rating received. So superintendents must have the ability to have some type of appeal process to challenge their evaluation ratings. And they gave this right to teachers also. So their logic was, okay, we've given this right to teachers, we're going to give it to, to administrators. So in Dr. Majestee's case, when we, when we do his, potentially execute a new contract of his role and contract, if that's contract, we're going to put in a provision about what the, what the evaluation rights are or aren't. And our firms developed a couple of different options. We've got three or four different iterations that depend on what the, what the board comfortable with in regard to giving rights of the superintendent about how functionally the appeal works or what the, what the rights of the person hearing an appeal would do.
So my question, who hears this appeal? Or is that just.
We would be open to come up with whatever scenario we want.
For all other administrators and for teachers, they have to have the right to go to an arbitration. On the superintendent's job. It's negotiated.
So the, the other groups have the right to binding arbitration, as Julie said, and they left it open-ended for the superintendent. So a couple of iterations could be a subcommittee of the board. Some clients wanted that, but the board just evaluated it. Could have private mediation and the non-binding recommendation of the mediator back to the board. Or you could agree to binding arbitration, just let that be given to the teachers and administration. Those are the three kind of iterations that we've worked with clients developing on our initiatives. But the, come up with whatever you wanted and we could write whatever kind of procedure you wanted. But those are, those are the three iterations that we've seen so far. Something that was always going up and down over the years, student growth. This was, folks at Bed and Public Education at this table. There was a big controversy 11, 12, 13, 14 years ago about student evaluation, or student growth data as part of evaluations. And they were, this state legislature was having a lot of interest in naming the percentage always. And it was at 50%, and it was at 40%. And that was up to the school districts to decide, but it must be a minimum of 20%. They've landed on these revisions at a 20%. So, and that's consistent with what I believe Troy's been using for a good part of, a better part of a decade. So what you've been doing here is now what's been changed to be part of the law. So from, from that standpoint, you're going to continue to do what you've been doing. Part of the statutory requirement which we're going to do today, I'm going to take you through a couple of scenarios. This is required by the statute. They require greater reliability training or interim greater reliability training. They did that for anyone conducting evaluations, including the Board of Education. It makes sense for administrators to do that when you've got a large school districts and you want to make sure principals are reading, teachers are seeing roughly the same. But I don't think the legislative board has understood exactly what it was. They just carried over to the superintendent. So they said, we've got to have greater reliability training for the Board of Education. When the N, when the N is one. So, so we are, by virtue of this presentation, have a section on greater reliability training. We'll be briefly going through a couple of scenarios, but.
Consistent in their one face.
So you could see some of this stuff was last-second legislation that was pushed through, you know, and.
I will say, I mean, a lot of these points that you have to do in the training, these are built into our tool. So when we get to the evaluation tool, there is a clear and consistent set of evaluation criteria. That's true for teacher evaluations as well. But the one thing that, that did have to add specifically is that second to last bullet point, calibration exercises. So I get that from tasks and those will just be incorporated throughout the end. It's very difficult to do, like Jordan said, when you have one employee, the board evaluating. But we've also built in calibration within the tool itself because it's a consensus model. So you are all coming together, doing the evaluation and calibrating at that point as you're going through it as well.
Development of local tools, I talked about this in the intro about how this tool was developed. We did research with Open University. What, what, and I guess this is just more for background of how this came to be. When we said we want to use less standards, we reviewed the professional standards for education leaders. It was formerly called the Interstate School Leader Leadership Consortium. And so we pulled from a national standard. And these were the, these were the components of professional standards by this organization that we had kind of identified as being critical for purposes of school leaders, especially in the larger metropolitan areas. So that's kind of where, what the framework of this tool came from and the research behind it. We jumped on this and we distilled this down to six. And we wanted less domains than even the 10. We did a little bit of comparison around, around the nation. This slide's not turning out very right, but along the horizontal axis is the number of domains and on the vertical axis is the number of states. So we saw that 18 states have six domains. So we're kind of asking ourselves, are we reasonable? Like, if we're just doing a reasonable test? Like, what are the majority states doing? How many domains do the majority states have? And you can see that 20, 27 out of 50 states have six or seven domains. And you can see that 20, 27 out of 50 states have six or seven domains in the superintendent's evaluation.
This review actually is one of the other reasons we worked on the local tool. Um, when we looked at some of those components, um, Texas just has stuck in my mind because there it went, and it's academics, instruction, operations, and athletics.
That's.
Yes, while that may work very well in Texas, it does not translate up here to our area, right? So, and that was uncommon, it wasn't as rigorous maybe or as noticeable with some of the other states and the number of domains that they had, but six was a more balanced number and it wasn't as overwhelming as 13.
So these are, and I know the boards looked at this in the, in their board packet, but and the folks that have been on the board, you, you understand what these are, so you could use it, but it's visionary leadership, policy governance, instructional leadership, community, communication and community relations, organizational management, and professionalism metrics. So those are the six global, global criteria in which your leadership is dependent with this tool. Julie, I think you're taking up the next slide.
Sure. Um, so this is just the breakdown of the structure. You'll see there are six domains, like we've said. Each domain has performance indicators and then it also has behavioral examples for each of the rating categories, so you can identify examples. You don't have to rate each one of them, they're there just for illustration purposes. Now, from this slide until the end, this is essentially copied and pasted from the tool itself. You all have a copy of that tool before you do the evaluation, or closely review it, but we really just converted it into slides. Jordan's already gone over the mid-year progress report and those requirements.
So just to be clear, do you all have to do that this year and start for mid-year next year or do they do the mid-year this year?
Statute assumes you would be doing mid-year this year.
I would. And let me, let me just put this year or this school year? This calendar year or this? The requirement is every year. It, yeah, so it's, um, if you're doing the fiscal year evaluation for this school year, so before the year in the evaluation is done. This, we kept it very short because again, this is not identifying deficiencies. These can be pre-existing goals that you may have developed in August, or at least presented in August. For this year, maybe it is a less formal mid-year and maybe in subsequent years it's built into your other goal setting.
Yeah, I, I would say, there is no state of Michigan Department of Education superintendent evaluation, please, that is looking at what people are doing or not doing. Um, we're advising you about what the law says to be provided. So to the extent that even Dr. McChesky provided an artifact that he's, give you, it's, we've got it set up as a written narrative, but there, there's not a requirement that, I'm presupposing you'd want it on an agenda to have the superintendent report out, but there's not even a requirement that that's the case. It doesn't talk about it having to be on a board meeting or board workshop or anything. So I would assume some organizations are just going to have their superintendent, he or she, report out to them in some court about their goals.
But it is calendar year, correct? The reporting year is a calendar year. There was earlier in the slides where you talked about the mid-year review.
Um, it is each year the superintendent is evaluating. So they, this is not the most well drafted.
No, but I thought in the slides it said calendar year, plus I missed one.
Um, the goals would be addressing either a calendar year or a school year. I know that is referenced through your slide before. But the timing for the evaluation in the mid-year is not specific to a calendar year or a school year.
No. So the evaluation itself, you have to upload it in the state system, that's how it goes to be set up, right? There's a pull-down, just the evaluation, the pull-down, the rating?
Just the rating.
Okay. And there's no such thing for the mid-year evaluation? So there's nothing that you're reporting back to the state? It's just the state telling us, we need to get a mid-year evaluation from the superintendent?
Yes. Because what that suggests, I mean, we're sitting here.
You, you.
We have, we have pretty booked workshops. And I know, so it almost suggests you're going to need to do a written.
Just a partnership report.
A progress report and then we'll.
Yeah, I can share.
We'll share.
It's really so hard because if you.
Not a thing, what his goals were in August, it's in here. So that helps us, like, feel like more educated on what we're working on. Especially as narrative.
Yes. I, I would suggest for, for new board members, it's helpful, maybe because again, we're coming into this, is to kind of keep that evaluation, you know, look at it periodically, you know, so that you can kind of take some notes around so that, you know, when we do sit in June and do the evaluation, we will talk about, once they go through this, we'll talk about the process. This process hasn't changed, correct? Does that, you know, statutorily defined?
And yeah, I think, I mean, whatever you guys are doing for it was so good enough to explain.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll talk process.
Great.
Yeah, procedurally, there's no changes to how.
And that is, I mean, also thank you for doing it that way. It's exactly how we have it in our instructions. We have some districts who have developed their own process. So I'm not going to go through the instructions right now. It'll make a lot more sense when you're doing the evaluation, but each of you will go through and get your thoughts together before the meeting, submit them to the board president and he'll be prepared so that, essentially for efficiency sake, but also it gives everybody an opportunity to review them and have an idea of where everybody else is coming from. So then you can do the evaluation in open or closed request. Um, and then you just have to adopt the final evaluation rating in open session. Again, that's what's reported to the state.
And just FYI, we, if it may, have our community, you know, indicated that we have rated our superintendent as such, and then we will need a paragraph that kind of summarizes the evaluation and the reasons for it.
Have the written review. Okay, so, component one is visionary leadership. Um, here we're really looking at the shared vision, the misstrip, mission for the district. The superintendent's collection and use of data to identify goals, assess the effectiveness of the organization. Um, this is also where the continuous improvement and planning for that, that's really this component. Um, and then the superintendent monitoring and evaluating progress. Just quickly here, you'll see, so at the very top left, that's the just general description of the component. The performance indicators provide a little bit more detail on what we're looking at. And then when you look to those four columns, those are the behavioral indicators that give you examples of what you might observe the superintendent doing to justify the particular rating for that component. At this point, when we're looking at this, we aren't assigning numbers. We don't have to rate every single one of those behavioral indicators. Some of them may not apply in a particular school year. Um, you may think of other behavioral examples that you have seen that would fall within a particular component and you can, you know, keep those in your comments as well.
So the question is kind of relating to what you were talking about too. So because we're only technically having three categories, and it's easy to see what one, but you said that if a board report out on which one, if we categorize, so are we, are we still trying to differentiate between exemptary and effective? Or some of those are really tiny state one categories? Did that matter or does it matter if we're reporting out, is this tool toward, and then if we reported out to exemptary, but then it shows up as effective on the state system, are, is that going to be a super cool? Or I'm just trying to have a better idea of like.
Which?
Do I, am I trying to differentiate between exemptary and effective? Is that something I still need to do? And then how does this affect what we report out?
You know, I mean, we can have a conversation. My belief is that, um, you know, particularly given our superintendent, because this, again, just like in education, this is developing tools. Well, and Rich has been really very good about wanting constructive feedback at things that he can do. I would suggest we use the four categories and then when we report out to the community, we can make a statement that, you know, we agreed that our superintendent this, however it will get reported to the state because.
Okay.
And for purposes of our tool, because we got some informal feedback from clients of that they wanted the ability to potentially do that. So we kept the tool, we had the four categories because boards wanted the ability to do that. And what we've been seeing are.
It's also, this is, and all of the research for this and as well as the national tools are based on four categories. So I don't, I don't think we have any districts who have superintendents who are great with effective. They're not going to continue to grow. You know, they're always obviously looking for growth. And it's a great opportunity to have that conversation, a dialogue with where are your goals? How are we going to move up to this next rating? Okay, so this is our first calibration exercise. Bear with me as we go through it. Um, really, at this point, we are pointing out where you might see the behavioral descriptors. So for component one, you might have a superintendent whose actions, staffing, and resources have little connection to a vision. And when you go back to the tool, you'll see that that falls into the needing support category and that's the descriptor. The second one here, superintendent who clearly communicates to the district's vision to others, both in writing and speech, that falls into the effective rating when you look at the behavioral characteristics. Component two is policy and governance. Um, this is really looking at the superintendent's relationship with you as a board. How are they assisting you with developing policies, keeping you up to date on admin guidelines, changes in the law, uh, changes in bargaining agreements? Um, and you know, obviously, we recognize that superintendents are not walking encyclopedias. They have to rely on their team to be compiling most of this and providing it to them so that they can keep you up to date. But it really is the interaction between you and the superintendent. So our second calibration exercise, superintendent who is not engaged in work related to policies and does not enforce district policies, you'll see that falls into the need support versus effective, which would be appropriately and equitably enforcing policies. Component three is instructional leadership. This is exactly what it sounds like, right? So the superintendent's leadership in developing the instructional capacity of their staff. They're not the ones in the classroom doing the instruction, but they are the leader who will be implementing that and ensuring growth within their teachers, their building level administrators, central office administrators. Um, this also looks at the development of assessment and accountability systems that are monitoring that student progress. And the last one here is, oh, encouraging staff to be reflective about their practice and taking ownership of their instructional practices as well as the super growth. Next calibration exercise, you might see a pattern beginning to develop here.
Yeah.
Um, and professional development is infrequent and not connected to student or staff performance data. Of course, that would be needing support versus actively developing expertise about quality instruction, able to recognize and describe the high-quality teaching. Component four is communication and community relations. Um, this, again, this is just demonstrating effective communication verbally and in writing and accessible to students, staff, parents, community, business partners within the community, um, the collaboration with all of those stakeholders, um, as well as using the media appropriately. So ineffective communication would be needing support versus regular updates would be ineffective. Component five is organizational management. Here, budget, budgeting is a good part of that. Um, we know that you set the budget as the board superintendent gets to implement that budget, so we're looking at how they do that, are they making good decisions, efficient, keeping up with, or evaluating management of your operational systems. Um, but also, this component includes protecting safety and welfare of students and staff so that could be some of your physical safety upgrades that are made, but it all could also include things that are happening within a classroom behavioral stress assessment that are pushing right now. So the example for needing support would be core or nonexistent management of district operations versus effective, which is establishing a clear set of operating procedures for effective operation of the district.
I think I'd have more on five, but the big one is, is of course, like Julie, the budget and the allocation or management of fiscal resources, but then also the allocation and deployment of personnel resources, right? So that's going to be the staffing and management of staff and how that relates to the budget. So that's, that's all encompassing of the allocation of all resources and management, organizational management of what you're doing with your money. And we all know within public education, roughly 90% of those people, right? So that's, that's where the whole notion of appropriately managing budget resources, people resources and what staff you're going to allocate or use.
The last component is professionalism and ethics. Um, at one point, we wondered whether this was actually necessary and fortunately it turns out that it is for some districts or maybe some boards, I don't know. Um, but here, it is exactly as it sounds. Um, so the superintendent is modeling principles of self-awareness, reflective practice, ethical behavior, promoting individual student needs, and just demonstrating values of the school So our last calibration exercise, needing support would be a superintendent who has demonstrated inconsistent or unethical behavior versus ineffective rating, which would be treats students and staff fairly and shows respect for all students. So the last two or three slides here, this is how we get to the final evaluation rating with our new, um, four components on the tool and the three that are reported to the state. Um, again, we don't assign numbers, one through four, for any of these rating categories. Come to a consensus on each of them, kind of circle what you have agreed on for each component and for the overall rating. They can all be weighted equally. You may, at the end of the day, decide that one is weighted a little bit more or you think that. or you think that that is more important. And that is something that the board will come to a consensus on. We'll then also determine the evaluation rating for the student growth component. Before the legislative amendments, the superintendent's student growth rating was based on an aggregate of the teachers in the building, in the buildings, all of the teachers. And they removed the requirement that it be the aggregate. We have maintained that in our tool. It really is the best practice. It's the best way to assess student growth or to measure student growth. Just keep it as it is. If any change is ever made, we have a conversation with Jordan. But again, aggregate really did the most accurate way to do that. So you'll see student growth and assessment rating for teacher, bold and underlined. That's where you'll determine the aggregate student growth and assessment data. What is the rating there? And then you'll use that exact same rating for the superintendent on the next slide to get the final, final rating. Just pull over what you've selected from the last two slides. Here you'll see, this is getting cut off on this slide up here, but exemplary and effective are each rated a three, and two for developing, one for needing support. Bring that down to this chart here. Eighty percent for performance, twenty percent for student growth. And then you will come up with your, your final rating, one of the three that were defined in this. And that is it.
We've got a, we've got a fillable Excel form that does this, that Judy has.
Quick question. So the student growth component talks about, is that something that we need to determine? Like you said, assessment data and growth, what numbers do we look at?
So, I mean, each of your teacher evaluations will have, they will have a student growth rating. Now this is defined, now it will be bargained, you know, bargainable. And then once you've determined, so you get all of your teachers' student growth scores. And then it'll just be the average or the aggregate of those scores.
So how do we get that for us?
Police service, start required.
Yeah.
Police service, this is probably.
And the way it worked under the previous law even one was that fifty percent and forty percent and then twenty percent. Ninety-nine percent of the, I believe, the school districts in the state, the growth ratings for teachers came out as effective. And that will continue to be what occurs. Absolutely something very strange.
Is that currently the MSEP? What is that for? Teacher evaluation?
It's a combination of state and local assessments, a combination of both.
Like someone contract, we can read what combination?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and that's subject to a lot of bargaining now, again, about what their student growth would be.
That's all changed.
Yeah.
Sounds different.
So previously it was.
Prehead into the city assessment and now it can be something else.
So does that compare where we are for the district state? I don't even know how that compares.
As you were saying, in that, in that format, and the way it's going to populate in our tool is that almost everyone would be effective.
Okay. It's based on individual teachers. Okay. We've gone through teachers' evaluations. Why do we do the teacher evaluations?
They're completed by.
So is that why we do our assessment, our superintendent evaluation too? Or why we've done it ever? I think in December, actually, this year we haven't done it because the new board is coming forward. You know, they decided how to.
No, we decided to do the board evaluation.
But it's the board evaluation.
We've always done super evaluations. I mean, historically, we've done it in June because then the whole year we've had opportunity to.
We have something to do it in December and then they only do the performance portion? And they have to wait until June to finish the evaluation?
Evaluation, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
June makes sense, okay. I don't want to do things twice that I can do once.
So question. So what we have typically done in the process, when you get way in, if they want to consider changing, you know, we ask board members to, you know, kind of keep this in their mind. At the, you know, some point, end of May, through June, is be able to put this on the agenda. We ask you each to individually do your own assessment. And again, I can't emphasize enough, it's less about the numbers and more about the qualitative feedback. What becomes really helpful is if we have a rating and you can say, I did this rating because of, you know, these kinds of things, because that's really most helpful for Rich. What we have done in the past, yes, they come to me and I consolidate them. But we have typically been just all gone in with, you know, our individual feedback. Rich typically asks them, is that in a closed session? And then we kind of go around the table, you know, for people to comment. In fact, what we have done is we rotate, you know, like tell my take one about this or meeting or man or whatever. And so they kind of lead that discussion. Everybody kind of says, you know, I did this, I did that. We have a discussion, we come on, and I will tell you, there's varying, you know, perspectives. But then we come together, you know, for that final, how to rate that category. Then after we go through that and determine the, you know, the final overall rating, then we ask for somebody, a member of the board, to write up a summary based on our discussion. They'll write that up, they share that with the rest of the board that has formally read, you know, patterned, gene. So I would propose, unless people have their, like, six or four for each. Um, no, we usually just kind of write up paragraph that hits the, yeah, that kind of hits the high points.
So for, so for Dr. Chesky, will he have an hour if he needs to get this specific data for the teacher?
Yeah, because he's going to be with us.
He's in. That's for the evaluation.
So some boards. So some boards choose to have a process where the board meets separately to go through the evaluation and then meets with him. We've never really seen him need to have two meetings because the belief is that, you know, we can each have that dialogue directly with him. Right, so he gets, he gets plenty of.
Okay.
And then I don't know if you still do it like this, but you also would share that, you put that all on an Excel spreadsheet or whatever, so the board can see what everyone else wrote. And you would give that to Dr. Chesky before the.
No, you don't, we haven't done that.
No, you've not done that.
In fact, you know, to be honest with you, I didn't last year, I don't, I don't remember. I think.
Carter put together everything. He took all our comments and summarized them together.
No, but not everybody turned stuff in their question, so you don't know.
He was taking notes. Years ago, there was a goal to do that, but now that I, now, now I'm just jogging my memory. Some board member didn't turn anything in.
Yeah, and so, you know, I mean, we can talk about that. If there is a desire for you all to see what others have written comments, then we can do that. If.
We shared that up verbally.
Yeah, because we will, you know, people have their comments on a thing and we go along the table and people comment. So, you know, if there is a need for people to see what others have said ahead of time, then, you know, you can do the consolidation process. If not, you know, just bring in what we have and do that in real time. And that's pretty much what we've been doing the last couple of years. And we don't need to decide that. We need to think about that at some point and say, hey, I thought about this. But, you know, I would really encourage new board members just to, you know, spend a little time familiarizing yourself with the tool. And then kind of keep that, you know, in mind as as well to the rest of you here.
And then we'll get to the, the goals and all that stuff. We'll get that so we know what those are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Develop that for April.
Cool.
Develop that for them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That wasn't, that wasn't too painful.
No.
Great, thank you. All right, we are down to other. So Audrey, any, any other?
Holly, I just wanted to mention our CTE report tonight. I mean, it's really exciting how that program, that initiative has been rolling over the years. And I really liked the idea, like, probably that I had more opportunities for that to be parents and for like a little setting. Because I think there's still in our community a mindset that this kind of career aspiration, career tactical education is kind of like that old school.
That which.
For them.
Which goes, um, comeback.
Yeah. Kids don't realize the great opportunities that it says that, you know, it's not, it could be going into a trade, it could, it could be a springboard student, you know, four-year degree. So there's so many opportunities, but I think there's still that mindset that that's, that's not for, for their child. And so I think we just need to, to work on educating our parents about what these opportunities can be in terms of further career or further education. So I really like that idea of giving more opportunity to do their.
Do you have any comments or comments? Great. I think we're going to probably do a part of that, but. You don't have any?
So in addition to going to the Open High School Board Association Government Relations Committee, which I talked about at the last board meeting, I also attended the MASB Legal Fund Committee meeting. The question was brought, there is a lawsuit. And the issue is language on a T-shirt that on its face might not be inappropriate, but, but the meaning behind it is. So it's a First Amendment, First Amendment case. So for our region, there was already like a more senior person on the board side to give the vote, but the vote was surrendered on this meeting. I guess in favor of the school district who planned the, who asked the student to. But I think it's, it's overarching because there's now so many things, whether it's emoji pictures right there on their face, not inappropriate, but you have. So that was it. Well, I thought we were going to talk about technology tonight. Is there, what do you think we're going to talk?
Dan's just going to give a brief update under other, yeah.
Yeah, so with that one, we had a break course in winter, and then we have another meeting coming up in two weeks. So that, that committee was asked primarily at the principal level to go back to respective principal groups where there's kind of a myriad of different policies that are all similar. But we had asked the elementary and middle and high schools to have that down. That way they can bring it back to the committee and let you for this one. And then from there, we did a committee, we needed to, to bring that to this board and break down to the board as well. And we also do have some survey data on that, A to the B generation study, that should follow the rest of the technical policy. So that way we can look at some of that, feedback policy, who we think can, in the draft policy. And then kind of, and the rest of the committee we're going to focus on, what is the best method to solicit a decision that.
So as a part of the work, I understand though we, you know, grant recommendations of what the plans are, you know, at elementary, middle, school, and high school level. Has there been any discussion about the, the, looking at technology and the avenues of communication? And I know I brought this up whenever we initially talked about this, but the kids have Schoology, some teams have GroupMe, some teams are on Instagram. And all of a sudden, especially high school students, are being asked to access anywhere three to five to six applications a day. And the minute they get into one, it's not going to be for the one thing that you want to go do. And so it's, of course, teams need to be able to communicate, groups need to be able to communicate. It just seems to me that it's worth the discussion, if you guys haven't had it, to say, you know, sports, this is your app, you know, student groups, this is your app. So that way we're not contributing, we're not contributing to students now accessing all these applications and then spending two hours that get trapped, entrapped in them. So is that something that you guys have talked about?
Yeah, the initial goal was to look at personal devices first, which was first one. And then once we kind of solidify what we think of prospective policy will be regarding personal devices, then we would jump into school-based devices. We had a little bit of conversation about what level we deem appropriate to have one-on-one and things like third grade and on, it's kind of as standard of, you know, third grader and on eighth grader, everything. Kindergartens in second grade, you know, way with a cart, appropriate background received, a lot of the building, chairs, clothes, and so on. So once we finalize this, the personal point policy, then we'll jump into more curriculum-based and we'll bring you to our.
Thanks, Dan.
And then, I almost did do a little of these publicly because, you know, a bunch of middle schoolers demanded me. But I, I, I talked to, and I don't remember this, but I also really did not remember that I had seven periods in middle school, that at some point, middle schoolers, middle schools had semester plans. And I'm wondering, I know that, you know, for kids who take like Algebra One in middle school, they do have, you know, and then there's X and the things like that. Whether that's been talked about or looked at, at least maybe for like the eighth graders. So that way, as they transition into high school, it's not such a big. But I don't remember this ever being a thing. And it might, I don't know if it ever was, and if it was, why would we want to wait for that? So I don't, that's just a, it's not an answer I expected.
Okay.
But yeah, because it, it just seems like at least sixth grade is, man, it's, it's a big hit for coming out of elementary school and it's, it's a lot for kids. Seventh grade, they get a little more comfortable. And then eighth grade seems like kind of your prep year for high school. And it, you know, if you did do it in the past, it seems like it might be something, you know, maybe not for every class, but just to get the kids used to this idea of the states. Yeah.
Spencer.
So many answers. Again, I might have a lot of middle schoolers that.
What is the question till right now? We do not have Spencer and that's who's suggesting, do you have it?
I, I, I actually had a teacher who said, who was talking about, you know, this might be something that could be, that could be brought back. And I didn't even know that it was a thing. I had not been in middle school in a very long time. And my kids who have or have gone to middle school didn't have this. But the, the feedback was this idea of them getting used to this before they enter, but in high school.
Were they still coming? Do we have them?
We don't have a district requirement around this, either at the middle or the.
Oh, you went to high school. But high school, they have, I mean, they have it.
So some of our high school scholarships, they have like STEM, DROPS, and portfolios, or projects, or demonstrations, or, you know, as well, but there's a line depending on the class you're taking. It depends on what ability or on how you're going to demonstrate your learning in the other class. So.
My sense is for the ninth grade teachers that it's all in semester exams, a little less.
I think in science and math, that's what we need for it. We think in the LA, it's different with writing. So again, I think it's really a budgeted condition for, for, you know.
But there's not.
But there's not a district guiding policy that requires, like, you know, we also don't require a certain percentage in the end of the group. Those are things that the district historically has, but those are necessarily best practice. When you look at the evolution of secondary instruction, we want our teachers to be able to be toward some of the best and that provide students with the opportunity to demonstrate mastery. And it looks different.
Do you have a sense of how many of the high school teachers or classes do have an actual exam as opposed to?
I think less than.
Because I wonder if there's more variation as, at the higher levels, at more, at the elective type classes than what a freshman might see? Because a freshman sees bio, math, history, because they, because a lot of it is taken language, and I would say the majority of those are exam-based.
And in fairness, most of our graduation requirements have common subjects assigned to those that the team, right around problem three, one, around geometry, so as students stay on, those core main classes have common subjects, but some of them will be different.
We can work with, yeah.
That's it. Okay, I had a task from last night, which is community conversation. You'll have it and get some dates for it. And this helped me, along with Judy. Here's what we are thinking, we're thinking of doing before the end of the year, doing two. Since March, we have so many of our events for the attendance area review, we have three, they set up, four set up. So we were thinking of doing one first week of April, the date that was given up was April 9th, and then one May, which was the date that was given up was May 8th. So these are the two dates that we were thinking of doing for this year, this school year. And the suggestion I threw out, and this is kind of personally for me, obviously a lot, is to try and do it every other month, not doing, not doing summer, for the next calendar year, which will be like September, November, January, March, or May, or something. And not everybody has to attend all of them, whoever wants to. This is me personally, because I don't have kids in the district now, so I have to rely more on the parents and the community to get feedback to me. So it would be nice for me to do five. This is a suggestion, so doing it out. So that this year, we're thinking of doing two before then.
I like that. Do you suggest we vary times or do we?
She already suggested eight AM on April 9th, and then five PM on May 8th, which I think, based on other events that are happening in the district and a lot of other things, which I was okay with, but here we're going to change in that timing, so whatever.
Can we do that with Dr. Testy as well? If you're somewhere, if you're, people have different schedules, so we try to offer a different time.
Very, Tuesday, April 9th is a Tuesday, and then May is a Thursday.
Right, so they have to. Different day as well.
So I'm open to trying that for a year, but if we have one person come, I, then I, you know, if there's more of us than there are people than I've been, you know, so I'm open to trying it for a year and see if we actually get them out, if we don't, then I. And I would suggest, I would suggest having two board members, and we will do.
Exactly, exactly. You have kids in the district, so you already get information, so it's not asked for. Then it's difficult to get all the information, but I don't, so for me, it's more important. So I'm interested in that.
Yeah, you know, that's fine. I just think at some point, the work of scheduling things, if, you know, over six sessions, you have more people coming, just to see, but I'm open to doing.
That's telling you something.
Yeah, that many, yeah.
So this should be, this would be held where? And would they read like an agenda with each meeting? Or is it just like an open conversation?
It's open, it's a conversation more of a, if we know information, if we can give them feedback right away, we can, it's a discussion. Or we gather the information and come back and get more information. No topics, no, no.
And was the thought you did this somewhere in the district? We had done this before, coffee shops and stuff, but.
Last year, we did, we were Troy High, we did a high con.
Prior to that, we were, we were doing stores, we were coffee shops, we did, I did a district facility.
I think doing it in the district tools for people to actually come in and see how things are constructed, basically. So that's item number one. Number two, I actually yesterday attended a Scouts meeting. Judy got a request from Scouts group asking for a board member to attend, so attended. It was very fun. The kids had lots of thoughts about what we should be doing, like recess all day.
Along with my kids. But I mean, I will tell you whole museum.
Here's what I suggested. I would.
Well, I thought they probably want to hang out with.
I suggested recess all day would work fine if they give up their summer, right?
Quick on the answer, I like it.
All right, a couple of things that need to be addressed out. With big kids being kids, one thing that, so this is the group of wild elementary and most elementary kids. The Morse kids had a complaint. They said the woodchips in the playground hurt them like crazy. Why would anybody put woodchips? That was their question. So I don't even know what that means and how, but this was a feedback from them. And then there was, like, why can't you put grass? Why can't you put turf? Why can't you put something?
Yeah.
The second thing that was a little more serious, and this kid was like, well, sometimes when I go and eat lunch, and my, the food that I want isn't there. So apparently this kid is a vegetarian, and he happened to, maybe it's a popular food that day. So I don't know what to take from it, but it's some feedback from them to see, I don't know, we have situations when they run out of food, and we had, we had supply chain issues.
Well, then, just elementary perspective, is that they typically do a percentage cookover over what's ordered, so there's fifty salads, they do fifty-five.
I'm sure it's not salad, okay?
Yeah, that's usually the vegetarian option, though. So it's a salad, it's something on it or off it typically. And then if kids, like what kids do, are like, you know what, that looks better than what I picked this morning, then the last lunch, last kids, like, hey. So that can be sometimes a sad.
So I told them I'd take this.
Valid.
Dan, if you get a feedback.
Tell food service, more salad.
Okay, kidding aside, I did go and visit Kelty and American Women Charity. It's a charity that is run by Troy, and they had a question that I visited. They do a lot of charity work, especially for immigrants and refugees, and they have a lot of like families and stuff like that. Two things, and they do also evening homework help for students. The students are not, the charity itself is in Troy, but the students are not always from Troy. Majority of them are from all around the world. Anyway, a couple of things that came out of it is one, and I had their, they look like, without the information, but a couple of things is one, they're always looking for volunteers, and I'm assuming our high school kids are always looking for hours to volunteer. So there may be a connection that we can provide them with our counselors who do NHS stuff, and that's one thing. And then the second thing is, since when I went and talked to them, that was the day where the Advents Charity Week was done, and that they had. So their question was, how do they give their name to the students picking their charity? Because they are non-profit, they are a charity, so I don't know how the application works and how they give that.
See, through every year, there's a window and an online application for anyone who wants to apply for the charity, and they provide that.
Okay.
The timeframe typically is from like November-ish, or if it opens up, and then it's early.
All right, one more thing. So this is something that's been on my mind. So there's a whole lot of executive orders and dear colleague letters that have been coming out like crazy, a lot of them impact our schools. And we see and read a whole lot of stuff online, and sometimes from different organizations. Does it make sense for us to maybe get direct legal help and information, maybe from our legal counsel or something, to get a more direct impact on our district, to get all the noise out of the way?
Well, we do get regular updates from legal counsel, multiple counsel that share with schools, share with statewide organizations. I can, I know I have shared some of those with you in the past, I can share those with you. Currently, none of the, none of the executive orders have any impact on K-12. The current executive orders are focused on the, at the federal level, defining and developing guidance that states would use that might have an impact on schools. So there's nothing that has an immediate impact on K-12. It's really now, it's really about us waiting for guidance. But I can share.
Well, where does the guidance come from?
Well, it'll come from the feds, and then, it'll come from the Federal Department of Education, and, and then it will be filtered through the Michigan Department of Education.
So it's just waiting?
Yeah, it's just, it's just us waiting for, for additional, just for guidance, more than anything. But I do have a couple, I do have a couple of legal updates that might, that might help to answer some of that, so I will share.
Because we just saw that you.
Yeah.
And the very last one is a comment from a parent, and I want to share this, is like, okay. So this is a Morse parent, recently, and apparently they were trying to sell their house and move to a different area. And their house, the potential buyer, or future buyer, decided not to buy it because apparently the grade school rating for Morse has dropped two or three or whatever points to last year, and it's at a very low level. I don't know enough about it, but I was wondering if you would bother to respond, or what is that?
I don't know why anybody buys a house based upon a rating, but that's just me. I mean, I don't know how to respond to somebody's decision about making, about buying a home.
Yeah, but I think isn't the question really, the way, what rating are they talking about?
I, I'd like to know.
I looked it up a tiny bit. It dropped from seven out of ten to five out of ten. And the reason, I believe, is the differential between kids who are advancing well versus the kids who are not, has increased or something.
Who's breaking?
Great, great schools, or great schools, and based on test data and other things. Something to be aware of, I guess, I just.
I caution against getting down that rabbit hole too far. If next year, the rating goes up by multiple points, does that mean more people are moving in? I don't, I don't want it to know the question.
Just a point to, to understand.
Yeah.
I don't have much to add, other than I'm still working with, last time we were here, I was talking to Nature Center.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm still making contact with them, about getting them into your, more into our science curriculum. Still continuing those conversations. To Audrey's point about the CTE and the EDPs, I grew to one hundred percent. Being at the CAP match in about last week was so cool to see that the kids were super nervous. And honestly, I think the business folks were like, all right, we can expect here too, you know? And the bridge that was created, I was really proud of, on the work of the district and the work of Doug. He's the sort of coordinator liaison guy.
Kendra, Kendra, then the two, the tech team.
It's absolutely fantastic to see, in my opinion, wide variety of students participating and getting engaged. You could, you could just see the excitement in the air. The kids were like, swag from their company. And to continue to create energy around CTE, and that, that work generally is important. I was telling Mike in the hallway on the break, like, hey, I've had seven kids either in through or in the district, I've never seen EDP. So like, this is great, let's go with this. I'm also proud of the, and maybe that's my fault, but it's possible. I'm also really proud to hear that they're trying to implement some metrics and data. Could be my class of the week is the MASB data class, so it's like really on my mind. So I'm happy to see that we're trying to create like smart goals around growing in this area. It's really cool. Also, the same night, we saw the Hammerheads Robotics, which I've certainly been the recipient of robotics presentations, but never in this way. I don't know who I was more impressed with, the parents who were all like, and I can say this because my husband's a beautiful engineer, like leg-shaking, excited engineer parents and their kids, the students who presented, as well as I've seen many adults present to groups, and this really fantastic work they're doing. So I just want to just say, wow. And if you haven't been to see it, go, it's worth your time. And then, so, bit of all that, and then, we talk to your point about community feedback. Certainly, in the election cycle, we got a lot of community feedback, like knocking doors, and that's one way to get feedback. But another thought, just to add to the great ideas you have, and that we certainly all attend, I'm excited, is that going to community organizations, like you did to the Kelty Women's Group, like I saw something in the paper, that Troy Women's Association is recruiting new members, might be another opportunity for us to put, to insert ourselves and be like, hey, we'd love to come and answer your questions about school board stuff, or just hear what you have to say, that sort of thing. I feel like, again, end up in forums, like in strange places now, like Kroger, and like you said, early on, like you might get caught at Kroger. But to reach into our community, to go to them too, because, yeah, you're right, like the senior citizens in Troy are not getting our, our communication about the thing happening at Troy High at nine in the morning. So maybe we can figure out a way to go to them so that they can, this community includes.
Well, somebody.
That's Audrey.
I don't know.
I use it because it's a good example, like, those are the folks that won't see that, like, they're not getting a newsletter or whatever. So great ways to go into the community, and trying to brainstorm ideas, like maybe share with you, to continue to, so we can hear people.
Okay, I will be brief. So we need to decide who is going to National School Board Association conference. Last year, to get the early bird discount, Judy registered.
Four.
Four. And just kind of put four people's names on it. And so we need to understand who is interested and available to go in, in April, three, seven, eight.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So I've gone last year, it's a great way to learn from other school districts. Most of the time, it's other school districts from around the country that present what has worked for them, what innovative things they have done, great ideas, and first issues that they have tried to tackle, and how they use students innovative ideas to do whatever they think. It's, it's good to see what other districts do, because sometimes we're all tunnel visioned into doing what we are always doing, and we don't have a little part of it.
I think another thing that is really good, usually the first day is the day on the field. So you have an opportunity to. So you have an opportunity to go visit multiple schools. So the career tech conference that I was making was at a conference I went to years ago. And then you also kind of have like one day of immersion. So are people, is there anybody that fits into your schedule? Yeah, so it's April, it's April.
Fourth through sixth.
Fourth through sixth. April available.
I mean, I would love to go. I mean, I'm always so ready to learn.
So we have to, we're, we're at a point where we have to make a decision on this day, basically. So can I ask, if you're interested, we should just go home and check your schedule and let us know. Can anyone else?
Man is gonna go.
Yeah, I got a man. I could go, but I've been on the last few years.
Sorry, I can't.
Yeah.
For the schedule.
All right, so you should let me know. I'll, I'll get with the, because I don't know who. Yeah, and I. So I could go. Okay, so let me know. The other, I, I wish really to. So I am not able, so I think I've already mentioned you, I will not be at the May board meeting or graduation because I've got to go to Singapore. I'm going to be there for a week. It takes two days to get there, two days back. But I have now a conflict on April fifteenth. I have an event where I've got people coming from different areas of the world and the organization that I'm working with, which opens up April fourteenth, which is Monday. And now it turns out because of issue with venue, it's written April fifteenth. So my request to you is, would you entertain changing or maybe pushing the week to April twenty seventh? And if that does happen.
I'm good with twenty second.
Yeah, what kind of screw, you know, sometimes when like April's a unusual month because the first, you know, so we have everything eyes towards the front of the month and we go through this without spring break. Well, spring break is the good for.
Oh, it's spring break.
Yeah, last weekend.
So, you know, just because April first falls on Tuesday and we do first and third Tuesdays, we got plenty of Tuesdays out there. Just because. So can we, are you okay with it?
Totally.
Okay.
So that'll be, that date change will be in the consent agenda further being next day.
And then the final thing is, Audra and I had a big conversation a couple of days ago. And I think Stephanie and you may have alluded to this because I think you guys took your data classes. And it does raise a lot of questions of, you know, what data is available? What really is the important data? And so I had a conversation with Rich. And one of the, the things that we thought would be appropriate and we could actually, we think we would have time to do this Saturday, is to have Rich kind of share what, you know, kind of data is already being collected. And then how else does a board talk about what data do we need for us to see on a regular basis? And even more importantly, how that data will kind of influence, you know, decisions from resource allocation? Because we are going through budget on Saturday. It would make sense, I think, to, to couple these two. And almost the concept of, you know, we look what's available, what is important for us to, to return to our work. And then, you know, then have a plan, almost like a dashboard or something that I, that data is available. So I guess your homework assignment for Saturday was to just really sift through. For example, one of the areas that has been on my mind is, you know, we had a speaker at the mic last couple of meetings really talking about health and some of the struggles that students have. You know, that's an area for me that is like, how big of a she is that in our schools and what, what even metrics we would look at. But we've heard about some of the inclusive challenges of students. What is a way for us to keep our finger on those? So you may all have some of the things that you were, you know, as a board member feel are, are important for us to see. So I think if we have a real discussion, that way we can focus the administration on getting us the data that we need. We'll see, and that doesn't mean that, you know, things will change as we go forward, but we will not have that conscious discussion. So, and other than just a reminder about Saturday, we are starting at breakfast at seven forty five.
Seven forty five will be out and then start at eight thirty.
Yeah, that's important to know. Because I have a hard deadline at eleven thirty. Okay.
Perfect. Questions on it, Dan? Yeah, just, well, you covered two of them. You did the NASP and the April, so it's good. I will, I'll check in, we'll check into that gradeschools.org. We'll find out what, no, no, we'll find out about that. There's a number of those rating things floating around, so we need to look into exactly what the. Exactly what the criteria is. So we'll look into that. That shouldn't take us too long to do. The, we are working on a board policy committee meeting. Judy's getting that out. I think she sent something out today, so we're, we're working on that. That's Audra, Matt and Nancy Ray. And then I'm working, Judy's also going to be working on connecting with our state legislators, so McDonnell, Coon and Weber, to see if we can get a meeting. So thinking, I'm thinking early in April if possible, we'll try to get, to see their, their availability. If we can get all three of together, that's great. If we have, likely have to split it up. But I'm thinking it'll just, it'll be all by cabinet, folks, and then we would invite all of you. We can all come together. It would be in a form informational meeting, so we, anyone can just come. We won't have a whole meeting issued if it's informational in nature. It would just be, it would just be an update as to what's happening in Lansing. I'm thinking April will probably be good because there's really not that much going on right now. So maybe in April, we'll have a little more information. Maybe some of these executive orders will have shaken out a little bit and we'll have a little more information with respect to some of those and so forth.
When they come, would it be possible for us to maybe show some of our facilities? This is something that I've learned at the advocacy, which is have the legislators come and see. A lot of times, they make decisions not knowing what's going on in our district maybe. And if there are things that we can show them or tell them, that these are like maybe CTE or whatever, or any of those. Whatever you think is important, to give them a tour and then get the updates.
Okay. Maybe host that at a building where we can also demonstrate some or share some of the things that are going on.
Yeah, all the choice. This is already within the district.
That's a good point.
Or if you're trying to advocate for specialized funding and a lot of those.
Sharing. Demonstrating where programming is and so forth.
Transition, the transition school.
Like this is.
For certain. Okay. That's all I have?
Working on a city.
Uh, yes. Kendra had a meeting today with Cindy Stewart. They're, they're working right now on a joint meeting with Planning Commission. And then they'll turn their attention to looking for a date that might work for us to join them. Likely it's going to be May, probably at the earliest. So I'll keep working on that and let you all know if we can, if we can pull that off.
All right, anything else? All right, we will adjourn, see you. Great early Saturday.